Welcome, everyone. We're called to order at noon on the dot. I know you have agendas, or at least have access to agendas. We're going to go through this a little bit differently. What we're going to do is first have the commissioners talk a little bit about some of their thoughts and where they are. Then there's several individuals who've been invited here by myself, or by other commissioners, or both. We'll have them come up and speak, and then we'll go to general public comment. So with respect to some of the proposals that have come up, I just wanted to let you all know where I am, and then we can go from there. If there needs to be discussion, we'll have discussion on each and every item that needs it. So each of the motions that I'll request today, I would just ask that we assume, for clerk's purposes as well, that they're all prefaced with "to the greatest extent lawful." I know there's some ambiguity in terms of whether the latest amendment to the executive order out of Tallahassee preempts us to a large degree on many things. So in order to avoid having any question or problem with that, I would just assume that, unless stated otherwise, all of the motions today start with "to the greatest extent lawful." So one of the items that we discussed before was hair and nail salons, and the fact that you simply can't have a six-foot distance between folks working there and customers. So with respect to hair salons, nail salons, massage parlors, and spas, if they cannot provide any services which don't meet the CDC or FDOH guideline, that's a problem. So I would propose that we not shut them, but that we limit them from providing any services that cannot comply with the CDC and/or the FDOH guidelines. That would probably be 99% of all the services they provide, but if they do have something that they're able to do in those businesses where they can keep people well separated, if it's not precluded by the executive order that was put forth, you know, that's on them to do. So that would be a motion I'd request later on in the meeting after public comment. Boat ramps, and I'm happy to have Ms. Bentley talk about this in more length after we get a little bit further in the meeting. I understand that the executive order, per Eden, deals with boat ramps and restrictions in terms of who can use them. I'll let her talk about that later. So with respect to what I was proposing doing with boat ramps, I don't know for that reason and others whether that's necessary. However, I would suggest that we may want to consider looking at today and perhaps considering adopting a motion today to recommend that we not allow folks to access the Spoil Islands so that we can avoid the issue of them congregating. With respect to the libraries, my understanding is that all of our libraries are currently closed. I had discussed with Brevard Public Schools in a separate meeting, not in a county commission meeting, potentially using some of their employees who were trained and perhaps even certified to provide childcare services to watch after first responder, emergency room, urgent care staff, their kids in groups that correspond or are fitting within the CDC and the FDOH guidelines so that we don't have any of those folks that are first responders or medical staff unable to go and address the issues that we need them out there addressing. So I would contemplate that being provided free of charge. I'd like as well today to revisit the issue of the beaches, potentially closing them from 11:00 to 4:00 Friday, Saturday, Sunday, in keeping with what the vast majority of the beachside communities are doing. I'd also like to address hotels, motels, and other lodging, including campgrounds. I know we have three county campgrounds. I'd like to look at closing them to leisure travelers. So essentially, someone, what I would propose is someone be required to furnish, to whoever's checking them in, that they have a note from their employer saying that they're traveling for work purposes, whatever those may be, or alternatively, a note from a physician, whether an MD or a DO, or a physician's assistant, or a nurse practitioner, essentially saying that they're staying in a hotel, a motel, or a campground, or other lodging in order to avoid having to stay at home with someone who's been offered or suggested to self-isolate, or if they have some other medical reason that justifies their staying in a hotel, you know, I think that's fine as well. As far as how we would handle it, I would suggest that we close the ability, or restrict the ability, of these lodging establishments to accept new reservations from leisure travelers. We should also consider what we want to do, if anything, with existing reservations. I think those who haven't checked in yet but have existing reservations, we may want to treat the same as folks that would call in after we decide to do whatever it is that we do, so that we don't have a mass influx of people that, quite frankly, don't need to be here. Those that are already checked in, that's a tougher question that we may want to look at. By way of update with the courthouses, I spoke with Judge Lisa Davidson about 45 minutes, maybe not quite an hour ago, and she had indicated that they are having conferences within the judiciary tomorrow, and she'll know more by noon in terms of what she would request that we do. So as of today, I'm not going to request that we close the courthouses or the clerk's office, but that request may change pretty profoundly tomorrow, depending on what kind of input I have from them. Beyond that, I know that I've received a slew of emails from constituents on all sorts of topics, whether it's closing the beaches, or putting in place a more restrictive stay-at-home order. One of the individuals asked at public comment if I could put their email on the screen or share it with the commission. We'll go ahead and do that later at public comment. But I do understand, and prior to public comment, I'll ask Ms. Bentley if she can opine, or is comfortable opining, as to a couple of the issues that seem to be pretty frequently asked questions. I know we've got, I believe, three folks here in the other room upstairs, or maybe even in the other building, that have questions about golf courses. And then we have at least one individual who is asking about childcare, and whether that's considered an essential business, or whether it's shut. So with that, I'll turn it over to the other commissioners for their thoughts, and then we'll go to some comment from the folks that were invited, and then comment from all others. Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you, sir. I have a list of things to where I've spent a little bit of time. I actually got to talk to Representative Fine. I've been able to talk to Ms. Stahl, and Sheriff Ivey, and of course, Ms. Eden Bentley, and Frank, and tried to Google as much information as I could out there. And it's hard to find the good numbers. Johns Hopkins seems to be doing pretty good, because there's a lot of information out there, and trying to get it all together was the issue. I actually was interested when the governor declared his thing, because I think I was ready to start bringing forward here that we would close all nonessential businesses that can't comply with social distancing, but I think the governor took care of that in his executive order. So I'm on board with you on that, sir, because I think it's very timely. My recommendation is going to be, and Commissioner Loeb, you brought this up last meeting about not having tourists come in the area at hotels, and I thought it was great. So I asked Ms. Bentley to do some digging, and they're the Florida Keys. I gave this to you guys.
Yes, ma'am.
And I love what they did, and I'm going to read these to you, and I think this would be great for us to adapt. The Florida Keys are closing to all tourist and leisure visitors. Affected immediately, no lodging establishment shall accept any reservations until further notice, including extensions to current reservations. And I wouldn't mind throwing in there anybody who's been there less than 10 days, that they be asked to go back to whatever area they're in. And then they also have affected here that they're going to do something with their RV parks, timeshare rentals, and anything that would be related to tourism. I think the overall feel in the county, from what I'm hearing from people, is they're comfortable with the county residents here, of course, but we're struggling with the thought of anybody from out of the area coming in and bringing us more of a situation than we need to have. So I think if we did this, that we closed Brevard County to all tourist and leisure visitors, and figure out how we're going to frame that, I actually talked to Sheriff Ivey about this, and I said, "Sheriff, how are you on enforcing that?" He said, "We will enforce it to the best we can." I said, "Well, how would that compare to what we're being asked to do with the beaches?" He said, "You know, about the same." He said, "I could, I would be able to do about the same type of enforcement with either of those." So I think if we did this, it would get the word out that we are not going to have leisure visitors come here, or have anything that's outside of county activities. So I think this might be a good thing for us to do. I think it would solve a lot of our issues and give the public a lot of comfort. So thank you, Ms. Bentley, for that information. And Commissioner Loeb, thank you for all your input last week, because you got me thinking on this position.
My pleasure.
And I asked Ms. Bentley, and she recommended what we do, is when we have these, we recommend it to the policy board, and you take it back to the policy board. And if you guys would vote on that, then that would be enforced, and that way I feel comfortable, because we've all had the input on it. And, sir, I also wanted to mention, I am full support of you. I think we probably are at the part where we really need to look at the campgrounds right now, too. I'm concerned that we're going to start, have Miami Dade start to migrate up this way a little bit, because they're going to get strapped on healthcare, and they're going to come up here even try to find healthcare. And so I have that concern a little bit right now.
And just as a heads up with respect to that, first off, I would agree. I think we should phrase any motion that's restrictive in any fashion to be a recommendation or a suggestion or request to the policy group. There are a variety of reasons that I think that would be a good idea for us to do that, not the least of which is, I think there's a greater degree of limitation of liability by having them do it. That said, the policy group, when I saw the EO come out yesterday, I thought that was significant enough a change to justify convening the policy group, so that I didn't give them 30 minutes' notice, which I think is unfair. I asked them, asked staff to set up the policy group to convene today at 4:30, so I gave them over 24 hours' notice to get that done. So my intention is, regardless of what we end up proposing to them, that we do have them together at 4:30. So in terms of the recommendations, I think you'll have an answer, one way or the other, by the end of the day. All right, Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think you've brought some, or will be bringing some interesting proposals. I think they need to be clearly handled individually, and I think we need to look through them at the, from the lens of a public entity and a private entity. I think you're going to see, certainly from this end, more reluctance to delve into shutting down private businesses. And I think I'm going to, when the county commission has chosen winners and losers, and to be clear, no one seated up here right now was part of that, but when we decided that we wanted to select certain individuals to give prayers, but not others, we ended up more than a half million dollars in the hole. And I don't want to arbitrarily shut down a business and give them a cause of action as we move forward. I think that that is, Ms. Bentley has laid out some reasons where there may not be a nexus to provide us cover for that. I certainly don't want to put staff to the extent legally possible. I think then we're ceding our authority on, to rulemaking that is not the board. We're putting that on staff, and I think that unfortunately, liability, we may still have that. So I'm willing to certainly look at the public aspects of this. I'm certainly willing to abide by and enforce, to the greatest extent possible, the orders that come down from Tallahassee. But to go any further than that, I think that that leaves us out to dry, and businesses are more than welcome to shut down if they deem that in the best interest of their business model, their employees. But for us to shut businesses down, we're leaving us, you know, potential liability, I don't think is probably the wisest decision to make. But again, some things you've mentioned were public, some were private, and I think, you know, I look forward to discussing these as we move forward.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank all of my fellow commissioners, Chairman Loeb, for all the hard work, because I know how many phone calls have been coming in, and how many texts, and how many emails we've been going through, and our staff's been working like crazy to sort them all out. So I want to just let you guys know that I'm with you, and I'm very grateful that I'm one of you. As far as congregating on sandbars and spoil islands, that's an FWC deal, and they're already pushing people away from them, so I don't think that's something we have to concern ourselves with. They told me that unless you're far enough away from the beach that the only thing you can do is tread water, otherwise you're not allowed on the spoil island or on the sandbar.
Do you have anything further, sir?
No, I'm just interested in hearing what everybody said. I've had a long discussion with Steve Johnson from Health First, and I don't know if all of you have had a chance to do that, but it's a very sobering situation that the healthcare community is in. And they're greatly concerned, as all the health communities are around the country that I've heard on TV and read in the newspapers, that they really, really fear that everybody gets sick at the same time, because it will overwhelm the system, and then they're going to be in a position of having to choose who they're going to treat and who they're not going to treat. So spreading this out as long as possible, and reducing this curve as much as possible, flattening the curve, I think is the term that's being used, it would benefit all of us, our loved ones, ourselves, and the community. And along those same lines, that's what the governor's trying to do, and I think that's what we're trying to do, by shifting through these different ideas to keep people from congregating and being infected from anybody, whether they be from New York, New Jersey, or from Orange County, or from Satellite Beach versus another. It's a concern on everybody's mind. So that's it, that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Nardi?
I would have to agree to some extent with probably a little bit of what everybody said. And I think our job is to try to comply with what the governor's intent of his orders are. And, I mean, he essentially says in his order, "All nonessential business." I mean, and he lists those pretty extensively out. So I think, you know, making sure that we're not putting any more restrictions than necessary, but that we're following that order as close to its intent as possible. I mean, I also did talk to Steve Johnson this morning, through Commissioner Smith, and he was very informative, you know, talking about other areas in similar population with similar health systems experiencing a lot of very sick patients on ventilators, and kind of the shocking news of what the ratio is to those amounts of people and how many hospital beds they're requiring. I do feel confident that we'll be able to manage it, as far as, you know, if it hits us hard, which gives me a little bit of comfort, but I don't want to, I don't want us to not be aware that, you know, we need to do everything we can to make sure we're protecting people. So as long as we're following the orders, then I'm game, I'm on board completely, so...
All right, perfect. I appreciate it, Commissioner. So we'll go ahead and address some of the folks that we invited here to speak, and there's no particular order to this, although I know Junie is here. So let's hear from Junie first, Sheriff.
Good morning.
Morning, sir.
So I just came in, I know a couple of you had asked for me to come in. Whatever I don't use, I'll give to you, all right? I just came in, I know a couple of you had asked me to come in and talk a little bit about the volume of traffic we're seeing on the beaches. I will say that based upon our team's communication to me, the volume of traffic on our beaches is significantly decreased. We are continuing to monitor that, and what we're seeing is, most people are adhering to the education awareness component we've put in, practicing social distancing. That's not to say that everybody is, but we are certainly doing our part to get them that information and dispersing them. This weekend, this past weekend on the beach, between the pier and moving north to the jetty, we had a total volume of about 1,100 people, which is considerably down from what we would normally see during that time period. The boat ramps, as everybody knows, are still open. We are partnering with FWC and some others on that, and I think for the most part, people there are coming, they're in their vehicles, they're launching their boats, they're getting in, they're going out offshore, or going out in the waterways, and most of what we've seen out there is everybody practicing social distancing. The only exception to that is on some of the sandbars on some of the islands where we've had people congregating. Our citizens have done a great job about making us aware of that, when we haven't already observed it ourselves, so we're going out trying to address that. One of the, I don't want to say unanticipated consequences of limiting beach traffic, but what I will say is, 528, the causeways were pretty crowded with folks gaining access to the waterways through there as well. But again, you know, we're asking our citizens to practice social distancing, to be mindful of what we're all trying to work together to accomplish here. And so far, the response from our Brevard County residents has been exactly in line with what we'd expect from them, always partnering with us.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I did the wrong one. I had called you earlier and just asked you about this. Can I get you to respond how your thoughts are that if we set forth an order through the policy group that Brevard County would be closing to all tourist and leisure visitors? And I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I asked you how that would be for you trying to enforce that as compared to if we just closed beaches and you guys had to close the beaches? And if you would go ahead and comment to us?
Sure, well, a couple of things. First and foremost, if there's a legal premise to do that, my responsibility is to the citizens of Brevard County. And so if there's a legal premise to do that, I am totally good with that. And from an enforcement perspective, it would require the same amount of resources and strategy as completely closing the beaches to anybody. And our team, there's no doubt that our team is, you know, on the beaches already, we're trying to do the things we're doing, but if that's what this commission decides, we would support that. I think it's a, I think it's a great model that protects the rights and freedoms of our citizens here in Brevard County, which each of us are responsible for. And also, I think it sends a great message to everybody else to, you know, take notice of what we're trying to do, what the measures that are being put in place for are there.
Thank you, sir.
Another question for you, Sheriff. And I just found out about this this morning from one of the city managers in my district. It sounds like the cities independently are communicating with one another, especially the beachside communities, I should say exclusively the beachside communities. And I'm just going to read you what the proposal was, going from one of their city managers to another out there, and I'm wondering what your thoughts are on us doing this here, to keep the beaches open, but to better encourage people to maintain social distance. So what it says is, "Beaches are closed to all activities except walking, jogging, biking, fishing, surfing, and swimming. Activities such as sunbathing, sitting in chairs, organized sports, or laying on blankets and grouping of persons is not permitted. Social distancing shall apply. When your activity is complete, you will be required to leave the beach area. This follows State of Florida Executive Order 20-91. Safer at home, specifically essential activities. Beach parking, beach access parking, and the parking garage will remain closed." You can guess which city this is. "Failure to comply with the order may result in further restrictions being applied." What do you think about that? So keeping it open to the recreational activities, but trying to discourage people from hanging out?
Yeah, so everyone knows where I've stood on this issue from the very beginning, but I, again, I was also made privy of that earlier today as well. And I think, you know, if we're going to have our beaches open, to go over there and say, "You've got to constantly be moving, you've got to be here jogging," or whatever, is going to be a little bit problematic. People go to the beach to relax, to soak up sun, which I think is probably one of the healthy things we could do right now. But, you know, the people that are, the cities that are there, they're the boots on the ground right now in their communities, and they're certainly trying to come up with what I think is a good balance for this. And so do I think that's probably the direction to go? Me personally, no, but I see where they're heading with that.
Well, let me ask you a little differently.
I just, to just close on that.
Sure.
Doing that's not going to limit the volume of traffic that's going to the beaches. The best tool we've had so far has been closing the beach parks and closing the parking. That's what's really set the stage for our decreased volume.
Perfect. No, I appreciate that, and that may or may not be the way that the commission wants to go. I really am not, I'm not certain. I'm just throwing some ideas out and seeing what folks buy it on. But with respect to that, if that's something that the commission recommends or suggests to the policy group to implement, is that something that you think you could enforce?
Well, again, we're going to enforce to the extent we can, whatever you guys put in motion.
Appreciate it.
You know, is it going to be taxing on resources? Absolutely. And my concern, and this might be a better question for Eden, is, is there a legal place for us to go say, "You can't sit on the beach"? I don't know that there is. I, you know, I know when I go to the beach, I provide shade for everybody there, so I think it's probably a good thing to have me down there. So Commissioner Tobias, you don't need to laugh at that, so...
You don't want him to comment on that last comment of yours? All right, Sheriff, I appreciate it, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Please, Commissioner?
Sheriff?
Yes, sir. I'm out of time.
Sorry. So I imagine we're going to be asked to address the issue that's come up in the past. Do we close the beaches down? And I know this mixes, you know, the legal aspect of things, which I understand that we have a responsibility to the citizens of Brevard County, but you're aware of this, we all take an oath, and it goes all the way to the top, to the Constitution.
Sure.
And there may be some constitutional issues in there, and we'll have Eden deal with that. But help me here. If we close it down, that 11 to 4, that five-hour block, and this also gets to public safety, but you're the boots on the ground, you're the one seeing this, are we going to see, I guess it'd be travel as well, are we going to see a measurable difference in the volume? And, you know, are we going to have an impact? I mean, what's your thought on the safety to not only the residents, but the people that work directly for you?
So the model that we have in place has done the job. It's significantly changed. If you go down to the beaches, I know some people haven't, I know our representative, Randy Fine, I think would attest to the same thing, because he's gone out and walked on them. But, you know, the volume of traffic is down, which was our ultimate goal. When you start talking about closing it from 11 to 4, now what you're doing is Commissioner Loeb goes out there and puts up his little umbrella at 8:30 in the morning, and at 11 o'clock...
I have a big umbrella.
A big umbrella. So at 11 o'clock, someone, whether it's my team or one of our local police department partners, has to go down there and tell them he's got to leave the beach. At the same time, you're only able to limit that to the public access to the beach, not the private access to the beach, and so I think that becomes a little more problematic in trying to enforce.
So you, and I don't want to put any words in your mouth, so the precautions that we've taken, shutting down access and not promoting the beaches in, you know, the ways that we've done in the past, do you think we've gotten to the, we've solved 95, or 98, or whatever percent?
Oh, I think, I think we've solved a huge percentage of the problem. And we're seeing that in the numbers. In talking with some of our city partners, they've seen their numbers decrease, you know, and you will get that ebb and flow, you know, as we get to the weekend, there will be an increase in numbers, that's obvious. But right now, with the state as it is, almost every day is a weekend. So, but yes, to answer your question, sir, we've seen a significant decrease in the number of traffic, or the number, in volume of traffic at the beaches.
Thank you.
And Sheriff, just for everyone's clarity, when you say we've seen a significant decrease in the traffic, you mean after the policy group's decision to close all of the beachside parks and parking?
Yes, sir.
All right, I just want to make sure, because I didn't know if there was something else that had taken place that impacted it.
That model, if you remember, the governor had reached out for us and asked us to kind of come up with a model, and that model of closing the public parking and closing the parks there had a huge dent in what we were trying to do.
Perfect. I appreciate it, sir.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Alright, let's go with Commissioner Justice. Or should I call you Admiral Justice? Two stars, you deserve it. Come on up.
Alright, thanks. Appreciate the opportunity to come up and talk about the port a little bit, update you what's going on up there. Most importantly, we're staying ready. There's 13,000 regional direct employees that are tied to their livelihoods up there. And we've shut a lot of things down. And so, but in the meantime, we're focused, as we apply the CDC requirements across the board and across all our business lines, we are absolutely focused on staying ready to be able to turn back on, to have the teams, the people, and the capabilities required to get particularly our main cruise passenger world going again. So, that kind of overlays everything we're doing up there. At the restaurant, real estate level sort of thing, there's only one restaurant still open for takeout, and its grills are both shut down. However, the seafood places, Wild Ocean and Seafood Atlantic, they are considered domestic food suppliers, so they're open and, you know, providing their product. On the cruise world, in the cruise world, of course, totally shut down, we've got eight or nine ships that we're rotating. You know, sometimes there's six at the pier, sometimes there's three or four at the pier. They're in for a day, out for a day, they go out and anchor, they get rid of their graywater offshore, and they pick up their supplies here. The remaining crews that are there stay on the ship, nobody gets off the ship. There's been no reported illnesses on any of the ships that are coming into Port Canaveral. Anticipating a question on the ships down in Lauderdale, it was just announced that they are going to be coming into port, and those passengers are going to be taken care of in a protocol that's been worked out, obviously between the county and the federal and state people.
Down in the south end of the state?
That's down in Fort Lauderdale, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Cruise ships, I mean, it's, they, of course, depend on, you know, there's a huge cash, monetary blow to everybody in that business there. It should be noted that the $2 trillion package, stimulus package, did, it does include port money, not cruise ship money, but port money. So that's a positive thing for us, and there's going to be opportunities, again, to keep our capabilities sound, because we've got some resources coming from the federal government. Cargo-wise, roamed business, and business is occurring just about as normal. Wood pulp is way up. That's how you, that's what you use to make toilet paper. Okay? So, I mean, we're just, we're a flow-through here, but...
Is that a double exposure as well?
No, and so you can get a feel for what, you know, the demand in the nation is for what's coming into the port here. The I-4 project is still going, so there's aggregates coming in. Fuel consumption is down, people aren't flying as much, so our whole, the gasoline side of it is down. So, but it's business, and the message truly is, business is normal. If you've got something you want to do at the port, we're ready to do it. I'd like to talk about capital projects for a second. You know, we're about a month away from finishing a $160 million terminal that is employing hundreds of people. And we have very purposefully kept going with that project, and we're going to have that project done. The people who have been working on it are still working on it, you know, again, employed. Is the terminal going to be needed as soon as it was going to be? No, obviously, but it's a conscious decision, and I think it's the right thing. We're totally, again, trying to stay focused on facilitating the businesses that we can. And that's just a good example of that. Other projects that are supposed to start, you know, that's a different issue. Some of them are certainly been put in the back burner. We've got a big project with Disney, a $50 million project that's been funded, and we want to, again, move forward with that, because it's people's jobs, it's livelihoods, and it's what we should be doing. So we're looking forward to that. And other than that, I just want to circle back and say again, we're truly, across the board, with our own employees, we've got about 250 people working, hundreds of them at home, you know, we're keeping them as busy as possible and looking into the furloughed thing, but that's, no decisions on that yet, we haven't got to that point. Though we're looking at, what's, again, what's the best way to get them treated? Because sometimes it's better to furlough them and let them get the employment benefits. So we'll look into that. But in the meantime, we're staying ready. We are absolutely committed to this county, to this region. Of course, as you know, you know me, that's, but I say that every time I get up here, but... And we appreciate all that you're doing, and our partnership with the sheriff couldn't be tighter. And we appreciate that arrangement as well, and it's keeping our citizens safe and as we get through this.
Commissioner, I just want to thank you again. You've been tremendously accessible, both for questions I've had regarding policy group issues and also commission issues. And I thank you for taking me up on the invitation to come out today to give us an update. It's great to have good partners to work with.
Happy to take any questions. Oh, and our boat ramps are open, and I underscore that particularly because people are going offshore. I mean, they're going offshore fishing, but more importantly, there are businesses. Again, these are small boats, few, four or five people, but it's a livelihood for a lot of people, those ramps up there. So again, we, again, we're trying to stay on that as we're able to.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? I appreciate you coming out.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Thanks again. Alright, next up, Maria Stahl. And I appreciate your coming as well. I know I didn't give you as much notice as I ordinarily would. I just saw that the numbers increased from yesterday morning to yesterday evening, and I thought...
That's okay, I was already planning on being here because Commissioner Pritchard asked me to be here.
Oh, great, okay.
Yeah, so I was planning on being here. So yes, the numbers did increase. When I was here on Tuesday, I had reported we had 32 cases, and as of this morning, we now have 48 cases. So we jumped up 16 cases in two days. Out of the 48 cases, 43 of them are Brevard residents, five of them are not Brevard residents. We have 18 of those 48 that are basically community spread, not associated to travelers or case. We have 15 in the hospital, and we have six of them currently on ventilators, and that's amongst all of our hospitals.
What was our old number prior to the jump? What was, because I know you do 11 and 6 o'clock updates, that was the 6 o'clock?
We do 11, this was actually the 11 o'clock update. I was able to gather the information prior to coming here.
Perfect.
So that's the most recent update.
So did we double in terms of the numbers on ventilators, day over day?
Yeah, I think when I was here on Tuesday, we had three ventilators. I would have to look back on my notes, but I think we did have three ventilators. I think we only had five or six in the hospital as of Tuesday, but our cases were 32, you know, Tuesday, I did look that up.
Thanks.
We have been in contact with the, we're in the contact with the hospitals continuously, definitely every day, and we are having hospital calls twice a week. As of right now, our hospitals, we have the Health First system that's definitely busier than the rest. However, right now, they are all okay. They all have their surge plans in place. Us at the Health Department, along with Kim and Emergency Management staff, have been working with all of our hospital systems on surge plans. And the surge plans basically entail, first, the hospital uses all their own available space, which would be their outpatient surgical centers or other wings. I know Health First has converted many of their spaces to negative pressure rooms. The next step would be other hospitals in the county. So if Health First couldn't take any more and Stewart could, then, you know, working with each other, you know, within the county. We looked at the ambulatory surgery centers to see their capacity, because they're not really doing surgeries now. Those centers, most of them really couldn't take the volume, five, six, seven, so may not be real worthwhile. However, their equipment may be, and their staff may be. So, that's three. And then fourth, if things got really bad, we've looked at facilities within our county to utilize, which we're actually, Emergency Management's investigating that a little bit more, and that's like Melbourne Auditorium and Seastown Mall, which would be, would be the big facilities. As far as long-term care facilities, we have staff contacting them at least every other day to make sure things are okay, they're following infection control practices. I mentioned on Tuesday that the state was sending EMS teams down. We were not going to be notified when they were getting here, when they were going in, but I would get a report of any issues that they found. To date, I have not gotten any reports of any issues. So, we're going okay there. And I think that's an issue of questions, that's the big things I have to report.
Mr. Pritchett?
Thank you for that. And you know what, thank you for always taking our calls when we call you.
Oh, anytime.
I kind of expected a little bit of jump, because we seem to be following the model right now, and the hope is that the model nationwide will start changing now also. And I did want to reiterate for everybody listening that you did step up testing. You're doing a whole nother level of testing now. You had level one, level two, now you're doing level three.
Right. We're doing level three with the doctor's notes, because that pretty much says is the community need and the hospital's surge. You know, so yes, we are doing the level three with the doctor's note. The level, the priority two, no issue. We're doing the priority two. Priority three, and that guidance did change over the weekend, so yes.
So my thought on that, we might start seeing a little more numbers, because you're doing, you're doing a more widespread testing, so just something to give everybody a little bit of peace.
And I can also say on our testing kits, both Kim from Emergency Management and myself have heard we're getting more kits. In fact, they called me two nights ago to say they were being delivered. I don't know the quantity, and I don't, they have not arrived yet, unless they've arrived in the time between me being there and here. But we are getting more testing kits.
Ms. Stahl, just a quick question, because I hear this from a lot of people, and I've heard it actually from the federal level. And how are we on getting some items that might possibly help aid in the treatment of this? I can say Anthromycin, okay, but the hydrochloroquine, I'm going to butcher that one. Are we getting some of those supplies in this area too, just in case it helps a little?
I have not heard. I know the governor did place an emergency, that they could be used for emergency treatment, and I know it is being used down in South County.
Okay.
But I definitely can ask that on our next call with the hospitals, too.
I was just wondering if we could start, you know, requesting some of that now, just to have the supply, and those are my, those are my only couple of questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are they still combining that, I guess as a potential treatment along with the Z-Pak? Or are they just doing it on its own?
Right, it's the combination of the two. Yes.
Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Isnardi, do you all have anything? Alright, hearing that.
I would like, I would just like to ask a question, because we're getting a lot of phone calls about, a lot of phone calls about people being tested that aren't symptomatic, and what, if there is a plan ahead for that, you know? And I understand the need for tests for people that actually have symptoms, but I've had a lot of people asking about, you know, how come we're not testing everybody? So maybe you can comment on that. I mean, I can answer the question, but I prefer that you do it.
Right. Thank you, Commissioners Isnardi. Right now, we are following the CDC and Department of Health guidelines, which is testing the symptomatic individuals. Based on the number of test kits that we have, it may change tomorrow, the guidance may change tomorrow, who knows? But we are following the guidance. I know you've probably all seen that Omni Health is going to be starting their own collection drive-through clinic, which is fine, and I did see in the guidance that they were going to be doing asymptomatic also. And I do understand there can be transmission through asymptomatic, but right now, we have to stick to the priority, the priority with what we have. So we're just doing the symptomatic at this point.
Maria, with respect to the drive-through testing, without opining as to whether it might be better or worse, is the testing, the same variety of testing, the same type of testing that Omni's providing, that FTOH is providing?
Our testing, our testing is either going to the state lab, LabCorp, Quest, and they do a PCR test. And it's depending on the priority level of the client as to which lab it's going to. So ours go to all three. The Omni testing is going to be a different lab. My understanding, it's going to be a lab that he uses, that that physician uses. It is a different type of a test.
Is it a PCR test?
I don't believe so, but I can't speak to that. I don't have the details on what he's actually using.
Oh, Commissioners Isnardi, do you have anything else? I apologize.
I would just ask, because again, there's even a newspaper story on it, and without, you know, going into a long discussion, but I appreciated the information that you offered yesterday talking about, since we're being criticized for not doing enough tests here in the county, you know, both your organization and our government, maybe you could just reiterate those numbers you talked about yesterday about the private labs not reporting to the state, that the number of people tested is actually far larger than what's being reported by DOH.
Okay, okay, and that is absolutely true. The positives are all reported to us, the private labs negatives are not reported to us. So, what is on the dashboard is the state lab numbers, positive and negatives, everything done through LabCorp and Quest. We really do not have the number of that. The estimation based on everything else that is seen is, it is, it is 2,000 to 3,000, at least, that they have done.
Fivefold, more or less?
Mm-hmm, absolutely. And we do know, we have heard, you know, like how many the Stewart physicians are doing on a daily basis, and that seems reasonable. And the other thing I can add is statewide, for all the testing, on any given day, it's between about 8 and 13% positivity rate from the labs that are done, so.
Are we a little above or a little below the state average?
We're probably a little below. If you look at our individual state lab, and again, any given day, I think when I looked yesterday, it was 8% with the state lab.
That's a good sign. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You said we have person-to-person spread?
Yes.
Some of the actions we may take are dependent on person-to-person spread that come from one of the five, out of Brevard County to one of the ones that are. Do we have any indication that we have any person-to-person spread from someone outside the county into someone inside?
It's both. It's both. As I said, what did I say? The person, the case is not associated with a case or travel? Is that what you're asking?
No.
Okay.
Okay. So, yeah, Eden, do you want to, Mr. Chair? Can I pump this over to Eden? She'll have to.
Sure.
You know where I'm going with this, Eden?
Yeah, one of the concerns is whether or not there's an ability to differentiate between residents and non-residents. And if there is a scientific basis to say residents should not be, non-residents should not be on the beaches, they're looking for scientific evidence one way or the other. It has to be something that you can substantiate.
I can say there is a report that comes out every, the same time the dashboard is updated, and that report does list where the person lives, it lists if there's been a contact to a case, it lists if they've traveled. So, and that's where I get the number of, what did I say? I haven't written down here. For the number of cases that have traveled.
Okay, so...
That are cases. So yes, that is, that is on a list, but I can also say they're not traveling just from New York, because we're getting South Florida traveling, too.
Yeah, so what I'm trying to get at, I guess, to put bluntly, do we have person-to-person transmittal in which we have someone from out of Brevard County that came to Brevard County and transmitted the virus to someone that was currently in Brevard County? So that's the nexus that we're trying to get to.
I guess, I guess I understand what you're saying. But yeah, a contact to a case, we might not have that detail on a report to say the contact to a case is a contact to a case that traveled from somewhere else to here.
Let me...
So in other words, you're telling me we do not have scientific evidence? Because, you know, this is a big nexus.
It's a big thing, yeah. And I'm, and you know, I'll have to, I...
Listen, it's either a yes or a no. I mean, I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I understand that, Commissioner Tobias. I think we just have contact to a case and if they traveled. But I don't think we have...
So we wouldn't have it?
Right.
So let me, let me ask you...
Unless we delved a little, but we might not even have that at this point for the past cases.
Got it, yeah, I get it. Thank you.
Is it, is it accurate to say that you are the highest-ranked official with Florida Department of Health in Brevard?
Yes.
And you're a nurse practitioner? And you're a nurse practitioner?
No.
You are?
I'm an RN.
You're an RN, OK.
I have a doctor at a nursing practice, but it's in leadership. I have a DNP, but it's in leadership.
Perfect. And you've been with?
And then I work coinciding with our medical director.
Excellent.
We have Dr. Barry Dweck, who is our medical director.
You've been a nurse for how long, roughly?
1979.
A long time.
A long time.
OK. And with respect to FTOH, you've been with FTOH for roughly?
I've been with FTOH since 1995. And prior to that, I was with the Department of Health in Buffalo in New York.
So you worked with community health in that capacity?
Yes.
Infectious diseases?
Yes.
Immunology, at least to a degree?
Yes.
So it's fair to say that you have a higher-than-average level of expertise and experience and training with respect to what we're dealing with? Obviously, not the novel coronavirus, by virtue of the operative word being novel, but with respect to viruses of this variety?
Yes. Yes. And the other thing I'll add to that is, is we are one of 67 counties with Department of Health. We have our top-notch experts in Tallahassee, which we have daily calls with. So that's our Surgeon General, Dr. Scott Rivkees is our Epidemiology Director, Dr. Karina Blackmore. So we, as the Department of Health, we are not a sole entity in Brevard County. We're a piece of the whole.
Understood. Let me ask you, based on your vast experience, your training, including your doctorate, your education, do you believe that there is a higher risk or that there is a risk by continuing to allow tourists to make use of our county, whether it's the beaches or the boat ramps, that puts our public in danger?
How, I guess how I'll answer that is, right now, especially with the governor's executive order yesterday, everybody is supposed to be staying home and self-isolating. So if we have visitors coming here from another county or another state, it doesn't matter, but traveling, they're not staying home. They're not staying home. So the more people are in contact with one another, so, and as I say that, they're going into Publix, they're going into Walmart, they're going into CVS, besides going to the beaches or whatever it be. So really, everybody needs to stay home.
So I guess what I'm getting at, and I'm thinking specifically, and I don't care what the names of the states are, but the tri-state area, you know, you have areas that I don't want to say are epicenters, but essentially are epicenters where you have tremendous numbers of cases. And disproportionately, we get folks that come down as tourists from the higher-population states, which also happen to be the states that more or less have a correlation with having a higher incidence of coronavirus. So my concern is whether or not it would be appropriate from a scientific or a medical basis to look at restricting their ability to come into the county until the situation calms down some.
I guess that's your decision, not mine. But I would say, yes, any recommendation to decrease people coming into our county that aren't our residents, absolutely. And it's not just the tri-state area. Like I said, it's South Florida too. Broward and Miami-Dade have tons of cases.
But do you? I apologize, Maria.
I was going to say Miami has over 2,000 cases right now.
So do you, do you think that we would increase public health and safety or stand to better increase public health and safety by doing what we can to eliminate or severely restrict tourism? So basically, to curtail folks moving from outside of the county, whether it's from South Florida, New York, or Montana? Do you think that would potentially put us in a better position?
Yes.
I appreciate it. Any other questions? Commissioner Pritchett?
Just a couple of thoughts on that, Commissioner Lober. I know you're trying to go, if you do the perfect risk assessment, everybody's got to stay in their house. Nobody goes, leave their house. You run out of toilet paper, you just add a leg. You know, that's the perfect thing. You've just really protected everybody. So you have to kind of weigh this. And if we are able to stop people from coming here and staying overnight lodging, I think that's a good thing. Nobody's going to come on here from vacation to go shopping at Walmart. I mean, I'm hearing this all day long, but we don't have people coming in from other areas just to go into the grocery stores and stuff. And I keep hearing this. So the goal is, again, to try to maintain our ability to minister to our citizens. And so on that note, I just think you're really smart, by the way, too. You bring a lot of good information. So again, we want to give the best care we can to our residents without making their life just absolute, excuse my word, past or hell. So I think that's what we're trying to weigh right now. So thank you for your comment, but I wanted to throw that in right there. So thank you, ma'am.
OK. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? OK.
He'll redact that portion, I'm sure. All right. All right. Next up, we have got Deputy Mayor of West Melbourne, John Dipmore. Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
And your city manager is excellent, by the way.
Yes, yes, I know. And I want to, pretty much you guys covered everything I was going to talk about for the most part, so this will be really quick. I just want to talk a little bit about the policy group because my city manager does sit on the policy group. I think it adds a lot of value during this crisis. And I hope that you guys will continue to use the policy group and its decisions and to continue using the subject matter experts involved, like Ms. Stahl and maybe others from Health First or whatever you needed to add to the policy group or whoever may actually add more value to it. I just, and I also want to thank Commissioner Lober for taking the lead on that because it's hard to do that when you're doing something separate from the group and you have to bring it back. And sometimes you're not always going to make people happy. But we need that ability to make those snap decisions sometimes. And I really think it's value-added, and I'd really like to see that continue. The only thing I want to talk to you about is, we're talking about social transmission a little bit. We had an issue a couple of weeks ago. If you're not aware of it, in West Melbourne, we have Sam's Club, Two Publix, Target, really a Target store kind of West Melbourne, it's on the north side of Melbourne Village, and Gordon Food Service. And we had some issues in the mornings when these stores were opening up, when the panic buying was going on. And we may see a little bit more of that going on as we go forward. And what we did was, we thought it would be prudent for us to go ahead and try to coordinate some of that, those openings, to make sure that we didn't have people at the choke points going inside there all together at the same time because there's quite a few people. So I reached out to all of the managers at those locations, went out and visited with each one of them, learned a few things. And we now have it set up. And I hope that we can probably bring back some modeling, maybe to the policy group that we could do countywide, especially in the mornings when they're open up. We have a police officer just show up at the morning when they're opening up. And they've all got their carts lined up now in single file to give themselves that social distancing. And that's kind of important because they're not on top of each other trying to get inside that door. And Sam's Club actually went one step further. And I think it's really important as far as we do any future modeling.
Yes, sir.
They have these people lined up, and they bring them in so many at a time, like 10 at a time. So they're not all rushing through at the store at the same time. And it's a very slow orderly process that they're actually doing. And Sam's Club seems to be a little bit ahead of the game. And they are right now at this point. And they were doing some modeling out in Arkansas at their headquarters, at one of the stores out there in their area. And they actually have a process which similar to other stores have, but they took it one step further. Instead of calling ahead and ordering ahead, you can actually go to the store and actually see somebody, will take your order outside while you're waiting. So you'll wait in your vehicle, you'll park your vehicle, they'll go and do your shopping for you, bring it out, put it in your vehicle, and send you down the road. That, I think, is a really good model. It's not going to work for everyone, but it may reduce some of the actual traffic that we have inside the stores because we're getting a lot of stories coming back as far as what's taking place inside these places right now. So we're going to work, I'm going to work, continue to work on that, bring some back to the policy group, hopefully it's in place.
Thank you, sir.
And we'll get it going, we'll make it work. All right?
Perfect.
Thank you, guys. Thanks so much.
All right. Last but not least, for the folks that were invited to speak, Representative Fine? Chairman Fine?
Well, thank you. I'm going to try not to touch this podium. It's going to be difficult. It's going to be difficult for me. What? I'll grab that when I'm done. How about that? I'll grab that when I'm done. I will not touch my face. But, look, first, I come on behalf of all of the Brevard County members of the legislature. There are six of us. I just spoke to our delegation chair, Renee Placencia, and he wanted to echo everything that I'm going to say to you today. First, I'm here with an offer, not only for you all, but for our constituents. The role that we can play in the legislature right now really is as a liaison between what's going on at the local level and the state level. There are 67 counties. There's a lot of people making a lot of demands. And so if you all need help, you all, I've spoken to all of you, you all have my cell phone number, you can call me. And I know that is the case for the other six members, or the other five members of our delegation, as well as to our constituents who are having a lot of challenges. You know, nothing less, for example, the unemployment system is very difficult to navigate because it was never designed for this many people to try to access it. But call our offices, and I've given my phone number before. Call our offices, email us if you want our help. But beyond that, I've come here to sort of ask on behalf of my constituents for you to adopt the sort of things that you're talking about. And I've kind of come up with a name for it, which I think is appropriate, which is Sir Brevard Safer at Home, but Visitors Will See You Real Soon. And I think that's the right, I think that's the right way to go. I have a few points I'd like to make. And I think it's important because these are the things that I think about when I'm at home and when I'm with my kids. And we're in unprecedented times. This is not something that any of us have ever had to deal with. And what part of what makes it unprecedented is we're fighting an enemy. The president likes to talk about it being an invisible enemy. I think you can say that on multiple levels. It's not only invisible because we can't see it, but there's probably one of us in this room who has it right now. And we just don't know because the symptoms don't present themselves for days or weeks until after you have it. It's a lagging, it's a lagging thing. So whatever, the situation that we're in right now is actually worse than we believe because there are people who have it that we don't, that we don't know about. This is the greatest crisis our country's faced since at least World War II. And we are, some are responding in that way, thinking that we're in a war and some are not. But that is where we are. I might want to give some statistics that might be relevant, and they're very sobering about the numbers of people who probably will die. So the president has talked about 100,000 to 200,000 people in his best case. I'm actually in touch with the White House, 100,000 to 200,000 people, best case, 2.2 million in the worst case. Well, that, those are big numbers. What does that even mean? So what I've done is I've calculated that for Brevard County. So the best case, under the president's estimate, that's the 100,000. That's the everybody does everything and does all the social distancing. That means 200 people in Brevard County will die. None have died yet, but the math would be 200 people if you just run a straight-line average. That's 100,000. At 200,000 people, it's actually 400 people dying. I have news for you. If 400 people in Brevard County die of coronavirus, we're all going to know at least one of them. But the president also talked about what happens if people don't take this seriously and they don't stay home. And they go and they live their lives just like they normally do. This sort of let's just ride or die and let it burn out, that was 2.2 million people would die. In Brevard County, that's 4,000 people. So those numbers are very sobering, and I ask you to think about them as you think about what you're going to do. The third point I'd make before I ask for what I'd like you to do is, we talk a lot about laws, and there's a lot about enforcement, and is this enforceable? And should we pass this law? I think we oftentimes put too much emphasis in what laws mean. If laws actually solved problems, we wouldn't have any murders because it's illegal to kill someone. Just because a law can't solve 100% of our problem doesn't mean that we shouldn't do it. And let me explain why I mean. There's value in messaging. There's value in messaging. Brevard County is one of two counties on the east coast of Florida that has not closed its beaches. I'm not saying that you should. Actually, I hope that you don't close the beaches 24 hours a day for reasons I will get into. But when you don't close the beaches at all, you're implicitly saying it's fine to come. It's why the governor, initially, when he did put in place these issues relating to folks flying in from COVID hotspots, he said, "We're going to test you if you get off an airplane. You must self-quarantine if you get off an airplane." And then someone said, "Hey, you haven't talked about people driving in." You're sort of implicitly saying if you've got to self-quarantine, if you fly in, but you don't say anything about people driving in, you're sort of saying that it's OK to drive in. Part of what you're doing here is you're sending a message. You're communicating to people what is important. Even if not everyone complies with whatever orders you put out there, you're sending the message of this is the responsible thing to do, and this is not the responsible thing to do. So again, to talk about the governor's order and the responsibilities here, the governor's laid out a minimum standard. You all can exceed it if you so choose. It is a minimum standard. You can't say, "Well, I don't agree with this part of it. We're not going to do it." But you can exceed what is in that standard. Now, he's put things in two categories. He's called essential services and essential activities. Essential services is pretty well laid out. There's an 11-page document plus a whole bunch more pages from Dade County, which defines what an essential service is. You're probably covered on the essential service side. But what about essential activities? That was quite general. Essential activities like hiking and walking and swimming and doing those kinds of things. The other thing you all should know is that enforcing the governor's executive order is a shared responsibility. I don't remember who talked about the fish and wildlife folks enforcing the governor's executive order about boating.
Commissioner Smith.
Commissioner Smith, that said, "You can boat, and we encourage you to boat. You just got to stay 50 feet away." Yes, that is fish and wildlife's responsibility to enforce, but it's also local law enforcement's responsibility to enforce. And I think Sheriff Ivey talked about that. This is a partnership. This isn't the state does this and the local government does this. The governor's executive orders are supposed to be enforced locally as well. So there is a partnership that goes on here. So as I talk about this Brevard Safer at Home, Visitors See You Real Soon, Commissioner Tobias asked about some data that says out-of-state folks are causing problems. And I will give you that data right now that might be helpful. Brevard County has 0.6% of COVID-19 cases in the state. So about 1 out of every 200 cases in the state of residents. We have 0.6% of the cases for residents. We have 1.7% of the non-resident cases. So our rate in Brevard County of non-resident cases is three times that of residents. And by the way, we only differentiate at the state level between residents and non-residents. So that 1.7%, that's people who truly aren't from Florida. That doesn't speak to the they drove up here from South Florida issue that Ms. Stahl talked about. So we have three times the rate of folks that are not from Florida as we do from Florida. Why? Probably one of those reasons is people know they can come here and go to the beach. We are effectively open for business. Go from Jacksonville to Miami, there are two counties that have the beaches still open, Volusia and us. And I'm not sure what Volusia, what Volusia has done. There's a lot of folks that are, so what I would do, if I were you, and you know, obviously you have to figure out how to do it, is a lot of what Commissioner Lober talked about. I would close the beaches to non-residents. And if you can't do that, I would close them for a few hours every day. We can go for our walks before 11:00. We can go for our walks before 11:00, we can go for our walks after 4:00. Because we don't want to be the place people come. People are supposed to be staying at home. I would close the boat ramps to non-residents if I could do that as well. And the other thing is, there is no reason for leisure travelers to be in Brevard County right now. You talked about Monroe County, I think I may have given someone that example. They closed their hotels two weeks ago. They just closed them. They in fact have a checkpoint up right now on US-1. There's only one way in and one way out of Monroe County, it's One Road. They have a checkpoint. They're turning people around if they aren't, if they aren't from there. I'm not saying we should go there, but there are folks that are doing this, and it is perfectly fine. You know, to my friends who, who are concerned about, who want to talk about their rights being trampled and that sort of thing, your liberty stops when it affects someone else. You can own a gun, you can't shoot someone with it. And part of what we're doing right now, we always talk about when we're talking about the Second Amendment, it's not the gun who kills people, it's the person who kills people, and that's true. Unfortunately, right now, it is the people that are killing people. We are the weapons ourselves if we're carrying this virus. And so we have to keep that in mind, that telling people you can't come to the beach for a few hours is not, is not a Gestapo, is not a Gestapo state. No one's talking about the police in the streets, no one's talking about locking people in their houses, no one's talking about arresting people. But one of the things that I, I'd like you all to think about is, there are millions of people who fought and died for our freedoms, and the notion that closing the beaches for a few hours on Saturday somehow makes void what they have done, I think it defiles their memories. And I personally am pretty disgusted by this sort of bumper sticker version of freedom that I see that is out there. The good news is, this is a uniquely American challenge. The good news is government can't solve the problem. Those of us who are conservatives should like this. Government can't solve this problem, only we can solve the problem, and we can solve it by staying home. So we're the ones who have to solve the problem. Government can't, can't do it, can't do it for us. You know, the last thing I would say, and it's something I think about often, you know, I ran for office because of my boys, I'm now with them a lot, obviously. But, but when our time in elected office is over, after the eight years we all have or whatever it is, you know, this, what you do right now, and this is the same for me, this is going to be the moment that you're remembered for. It's not going to be all the other votes, things like that. What happens now, I've told my sons, this is going to be the moment in your life that will end up in the history books 30, 40, 50 years from now. This is what people will remember. So what you do now determines, you know, how we will all be remembered. And our choice here is, do we want to be a 200 or a 400 death case? And by the way, the number of 200 is still incalculably terrible. But that's the best case. Do we want to be a 200 or a 400?
4,000.
Or do we want to be 4,000? That, that's, that is effectively the choice. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, I say to all of you, my, my phone is on, my, my door is open, whatever, whatever I can do to help with the connections that I have, I'm happy to offer. But you know, this is, people are scared, they should be scared, but we're America, we'll get through this. And hopefully we'll get through it with as few people dying as possible. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yeah, based on all the information we've heard, sir, I would like to make a motion that we would send to the Policy Board, that they would make a motion that's entitled, "Brevard Safer at Home, Visitors See You Real Soon," and that we would go ahead and pretty much go with Monroe County's one. Brevard County is closing to all tourist and leisure visitors effective immediately. No lodging establishments shall accept reservations to further notice, including extensions to current reservations. And then we would change the dates in this, that would include RV parks, time shares, and campgrounds. And so I would like to make that motion, sir, that we would send that forth to the Policy Board.
I'll happily second that for discussion. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you. We, we need to spend a little more time with this. Commissioner Pritchett, and I'm not married, so this is a terrible example, but let me give you it. My wife beats me, and I'm a victim of domestic violence. I didn't want to do it the other way, but, but look at, look at, look at the Monroe County there, and would I be able to go to a hotel if that was the case?
I think so. I think all Brevard County residents, we need to write that in there, but I am very...
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you know, there are 500 examples, that's just one.
Okay.
That's just 500.
Well, let's, let's add the thing in there as we're doing this.
I would be real careful with that.
Brevard County residents can't...
I would be real careful, because I think it's contemplated that if you, if you're there and you're staying there for purpose other than tourism or leisure, it's fine. I would be real careful when you specifically distinguish between folks that live in the county and out of the county. Because our likelihood of getting sued, and more importantly, successfully sued, increases remarkably when we start making that differentiation. But I, I think we're, we're fine, because if you read what, what you proposed and what's been circulating from Monroe County, it's ordered that the Keys are closing to tourists and leisure visitors.
Okay.
So that, that would implicitly serve to, to end up achieving by and large the same function that I think Commissioner Tobias is concerned about.
Okay, so we could just stop there?
I, I think, I think you're good with what you proposed from that standpoint in terms of what, what that would include, but I'll defer to Ms. Bentley if she has a different thought.
Okay, well, hold on a second, I'm getting a little confused, and I hate to admit this in public. So if we went with this, and that first line is there, Commissioner Tobias brought a good point, you have somebody that has to move into a hotel for a while here that lives here, I don't want to do anything to harm that.
So, so, Mr. Chair?
Please.
So when we look at this, you know, the, the first one is like any of our resolutions, right? I mean, they're, they're, I hate to say this, and this is why I don't sponsor many of them, they're absolutely utterly and totally meaningless. They're aspirational, right? The Florida Keys, Brevard County, we, we could say Brevard County is closed to all tourists and leisure visitors. I have no problem with that, but there's no force behind it. It's like, you know, wash your hands a lot, or stay at least six feet away from somebody, practice social distancing protocol, right? I've got no problem with that. If you want a resolution that says that, you know, but when we start infringing on businesses, right, and we go above what Chairman Fine had said, I mean, if the governor thought that this was important to shut down the beaches, the governor would have shut down the beaches. He would have done that. If the governor would have said that, "I want nail salons closed," he had the power to do that. He decided that that was not, that not according to the executive order that I read, that, that nail salons are not specifically closed.
Right. He put it on the individual not to visit places that aren't compliant, so that works for me.
Yeah, they, they had it, I've got no problem with that aspirational bit there, but when we go down and here's, and we'll get to this, I think, but I want to handle this individually when we get there, and I thank Commissioner Loebert for itemizing all of that stuff instead of doing it blanket. So if we start to shut down hotels as what this will do, or at least greatly limit the people that can go to those hotels, that's a private business. Now, my, my, my concern is, think about this objectively, we haven't shut down the enterprise funds that are government ones. How, how bad does that look that we're shutting down hotels, but we're not shutting down our own campsites?
No, I want to do that.
I, I want, I want to do it too, but I think we need to handle this in a logical order, and just, you know, throwing out what Monroe, this is the first time I saw Monroe, and listen, I'll second, second it if you want to say Brevard County is closed to all tourists and leisure visitors, you know, I, I will second that motion. But when we, when we get down to, you know, shutting down some of, some of this stuff in here, I think we need to look at this individually.
Okay. Well, Commissioner Loebert, like you said, just working with, with absolutes here, if we close to all tourists and leisure visitors, we don't have to really do anything with hotels, because hotels then is not able to have tourists and leisure.
You're much safer putting it in there. I would eliminate the ambiguity. If it's redundant, it's redundant, but you're certainly safer by having it in there. I'm not saying that because Monroe did it, therefore we should do it as well, but there's a good reason that it's in there.
It's, it's a good little thing they put in here to stop tourist inflow, that's why they did it.
Right. What they put in there is, they include all lodging establishments.
Yeah.
We can go a step further and define lodging establishments as including, but not being necessarily limited to hotels, motels, campgrounds, and anything else someone thinks might fit, whether it's Airbnb or VRBO or vacation rentals, I guess would be the term. So I, I do think we need to do that if we want to be clear. So actually looking at, at what you passed out at the beginning of the meeting here, short-term rentals are included as well, vacation rentals, transient rentals, marinas, RV parks, time shares. So we, we can have something that's, that's relatively all-encompassing. This particular order does nothing to stop folks, from what I, I see, from coming here for any purpose other than tourism or leisure. And the question I have, you know, look, I, I get it, and I don't want to do anything to a private business, and private businesses have a right to operate in a capitalistic society in order to make a profit. I have nothing against that. I think that's wonderful, I think they should continue doing that. But the problem is, we're talking about businesses that are prioritizing their bottom line over the health and safety of, forget us, their own employees. I've had folks reach out to me from private businesses that work there and say, "I have to choose between being fired or showing up at my job," including folks at hotels. If I don't show up to work and expose myself to these folks that are coming in from out of town, I'm going to lose my job. I can't afford to do that, I'm the only breadwinner in the house, and I've got, I've got dependents.
But doesn't the hotels now have to comply with the governor's order, that they're going to have to be in a situation where they're able to keep the social distancing practice? Well, actually, they don't, people aren't to go to these places anymore if they aren't able to comply with his order.
Rather than hoping that people do what they should and adhere to, to our interpretation of what that EO means, there's nothing that prevents us from having something which may or may not be redundant. I would much rather cover what we intend to cover, even in the event that it proves to be redundant. It gives law enforcement another means and another mechanism of enforcing.
Can we ask Sheriff Ivy?
Sheriff?
Yes, sir.
Would you mind coming down, sir? With or without Junie? Commissioner?
Yes, sir. On this conversation that we're having with this, I think you've had an opportunity to read it. As far as legality-wise, when we're, we're trying, my goal is to try to accomplish having not visitors come over and bring extra infection into the community. And, and whether that's happening or not, by the numbers we're hearing from everybody, the, the, the comfort it would give the community, I think, would be a very big benefit. So as, as far as what we're talking about up here, as far as trying to legally establish how we're doing this effective with hotels, so let me ask you this, Sheriff, and I, I love what you said, Mr. Fine, is that sometimes you put things out there knowing it's not going to be perfectly enforced, but they're wonderful things to throw out. So if we put out, Brevard County is closing to all tourist and leisure visitors, what would that mean for you that you think, sir, that, that you would be able to come alongside? Or what does that, I'm going to throw you on the spot here, how do you think that would work for you as far as attaining our goal?
Well, I think the first thing is to have our legal team tell us if we can even do that. Secondly, if you're going to put out something that has no teeth, you're putting us in a, in a situation where when we go to somebody and say, "You're from Orange County, you're not supposed to be here," they can tell me, "Take a hike," and there's nothing I can do about it.
So you would want us to define certain areas where this is...
If you're going to do something, give me some teeth.
So you want this to define as, as far as the hotels, and as far as maybe public areas that you have the stability to enforce it, like boat ramps then and beaches, you would be able to go up and say, "If you're not a county resident, you can't be here," because if you're, if you are a tourist or a leisure visitor, you can't be here. You could say that at that point.
Right. And so, but, you know, if you give me some teeth. Now, there's, there's a flip side to that, too.
Okay.
I don't believe this will happen, but if we start getting people that are doing that, now we're taking those people and the teeth you give me if it's to charge them with something, whether it's to give them a notice to appear, or it leads to something else, now we've created another series of problems. But those, you know, especially with our courts being backed up as they are and everything else. So, you know, if, if we're going to do that, you got to give me some teeth with it. But I, I get the, I get the premise of being able to say, "We are, we are closed for business right now." I, I get that.
Sure.
I understand that. But, you know, there will be those that test the water.
What would you like to see happen?
How about up to 60 days in jail and a $500 fine? As max. I'm not saying that's what anyone under the sun is going to get, but something to wave in front of them if they decide to get belligerent with your WPs.
You know, again, our, our job is to enforce the law or whatever you put in place, not to, not to create it.
You know, right now, nobody's got money. I mean, no matter where you're at, nobody's got money. I'm thinking if I lived...
Randy Fine's got money.
Randy, he's got a lot of money. I was thinking if I lived down in the south area and my family wasn't infected, I would love to come up to this area and just, just get out of all the mess right now. So that's what I'm thinking, and not that I don't care about them, but I care about this county, so...
I, I said when I first walked up here, if, if we legally can do what, what you, you know, have suggested from the, the other model that was already put in place, our team will, will work to enforce that as, as best we can. I don't know what teeth comes with that model, but again, our, our team's going to work to enforce whatever we can.
So if we do that, we just, I'm sorry, sir, we just kind of solved the beach issue, we kind of solved the boat ramp issue. I mean, this really kind of solves what I'm hearing from the county is their biggest problem. And then we aren't saying anymore that we're welcoming other people into the area. Ms. Bentley, is it legal?
Yes. Please, Ms. Bentley.
Well, under 252, you have additional authority. You're really concerned with the lack of definition. That certainly is an issue that they will have to address. I mean, the first line of defense will be the hotels who are going to be addressing these issues, and that's going to be something that you're going to have to work with on a case-by-case basis. It's going to be a challenge. You know, how do you define a tourist? We're going to be dealing with that issue, but it may be that as we go through this process, we may find some additional definitions. This is, this situation is changing day by day.
It is.
Actually, hour by hour. We discovered this morning.
The only, the only other thing that I would add, and you've probably already looked at this, knowing you, but is there, is there something that when we're in a declared state of emergency, as the state of Florida is, is there something that gives us the ability to supersede some of this in, in a legal definition?
Well, that's, that's what we're talking about with 252, that you have additional powers, but your problem is really the, the clarity of the definition, and that's not addressed in 252.
Sheriff, we don't have to hammer all this out at this instant, as long as we figure out what the general consensus is of the board, we can figure this out prior to 4:30 when we have the policy group call.
Yes, sir. So I, I, what I would say in that regard is, you know me, I'm going to be a good partner, our team's going to work as hard as we can to enforce whatever this commission puts into play.
You've done a great job.
We're at a, I've said this before, we're in uncharted waters, so whatever, whatever you ask me to take on, as long as I have a legal stance to do it, I, I will take that challenge.
I'll, I'll make sure we give you some teeth on it, plenty of teeth.
All right.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's too bad Mr. Krantis isn't here, but from what I've read in our local paper, that we're looking at occupancy rates at 20%. So my, my question here is, without any scientific evidence, we had our, we had our health director here tell us that there is no scientific evidence providing the nexus that a tourist has transmitted coronavirus to a resident. And with hotel rates at a fifth of what they were, and you imagine most of those folks are the ones listed here, and potentially opening ourselves up to liability-taking essentially, is, is it worth the risk of, of, of doing it? I think Chairman Fine had the best example, and, and had the best idea I've heard yet, is maybe we task Mr. Krantis with providing information out there that, that we're closed, that, that stay home, and in Brevard County, we're, we're not taking tourists. We want you, but we just, not, now's not, now's not the best time. But when we start taking actions like this that may have little or no effect, I feel bad for the sheriff. Now, think about one, not the sheriff, but think about one of the deputies, because he has to relay this down to a deputy who has to then see someone at a hotel. I don't know if we're going to have them at every hotel to screen every individual that walks through, but, you know, what happens if that person fibs? What happens if there's a gray area? I just brought up one gray area, and, you know, there's probably 500 other ones. That puts that deputy in a terrible position. That puts the sheriff in a terrible position. That, that, that provides so many, so many issues, and again, we're dealing with occupancy rates of a fifth of, of, and you got to remember, there are hotels that have shut down, too. So it's probably much less than that. I, I'm just extremely concerned with the liability that we could have, that we're opening ourselves up to. Again, remember the prayer, when we arbitrarily chose one religion over another, we ended up half a million dollars, and thankfully, insurance picked up a great deal of that. And again, that was none of us up here, but, but, but there are, there are repercussions to actions that we could take, and, and no proof of, of what we're trying to stop from happening, from, from actually happening. So I just want you to keep that in mind as, as certainly we move forward.
Several thoughts, as I'm chomping at the bit to respond to some of that.
You're the chairman, go for it.
Yeah, and there are no lights, which gives me a little bit more freedom to roam about here. As far as the contention that because we don't have that specific data from FDOH that there's no scientific nexus, I would say that's not correct for two reasons, and two reasons we've already heard. First, we've heard in her decades of experience, working in infectious diseases, immunology, community health, that it would be in the public's interest, in its public's health and safety interest, not to have tourists come in. We also heard the scientific nexus in the form of the numbers from Randy Fine, showing that we have a roughly threefold difference in non-Florida resident cases versus Florida resident cases in Brevard. It's probably far worse than that if you, if you factor in which counties they're coming from. It's probably far worse than that if you factor in which counties they're coming from. So I would disagree with the conclusion that there's no scientific nexus. I do believe we have a scientific nexus, whether one's required or not at this point. The other question that I have, and really to cut right to it, is do we really wanna have tourists here now? I don't. I don't wanna have them here right now. I don't want them in the least. We can have them when we're in a better position. It is reckless and irresponsible for us to do things to drive tourism up when we have an epidemic that, quite frankly, will be in history books. And as far as a potential liability, look, I'm not concerned that someone's gonna sue us. I'm concerned that someone may sue us successfully. I don't have that concern, given what's going on, the fact we have a federal estate and a local state of emergency. We have to have the spine to protect our residents and the spine to protect our citizens. So to potentially incur some anomalous liability that we can't really define, that we've not even heard there's a moderate chance of assuming, or that even if we were to lose some cause of action, whatever that might be, that it would put us in a bad position, that's not a reason to say, okay, well, we'll let our constituents get infected, because we're too spineless to assume some theoretical liability that we can't even define very well. As far as using or having Mr. Krantis use the TDT to send a message out or messaging out that we're closed for business, I don't know that that's lawful, to use the TDT to oppose and discourage tourism. I think that's, quite frankly, to the contrary of the purpose. I would have to pull the statute, but I don't know that that's gonna be lawful. As far as Mr. Krantis's opinion, and I was trying to pull the email up here, I can't, but I do have an email, I'm almost certain here, from Mr. Krantis, where he indicated that were we to do something along these lines, it really wouldn't have a tremendous impact on the bottom line of the hotels for the simple reason that they're already hurting for occupancy, because people generally don't wanna travel. Unless, of course, they're trying to get out of areas that have restrictions, heavy restrictions, so that they can enjoy our freedom, which has the tangential effect of getting our people infected. So with respect to who's gonna police and how we're gonna have deputies show up at hotels or law enforcement officers show up at hotels, I would fall back on what I suggested prior to having any comment, in that we can have folks required to produce either a note from their employer saying they're traveling for work purposes, whatever those might be, or alternatively, a note from a physician saying they're there for medical purposes. That's good. And in terms of, you know, do we trust the hotels to weed that out? Yeah, I do trust them to weed it out. I do. I mean, again, unless you wanna have an enforcement nightmare, I think you have to. So the comparison or the analogy of us losing a prayer lawsuit that, quite frankly, none of us, I can tell you, I certainly would not have supported the position that the county held that was not the winning position, and I opposed appealing it yet again, because of the waste of taxpayer funds and the aggravation it's gonna cause for us to get nothing. Comparing that to our responses in an epidemic, something that was found patently unconstitutional, compared to actions which no lawyer, no judge in their right mind would ever say are unconstitutional, it's a false equivalency. It simply is a false equivalency. It's like saying that, well, we have the Second Amendment, so therefore I can build a dirty bomb and I can have an anthrax lab in my house. That's not what that means. You know, there is no tie-in to what we're proposing in any facet of something that could reasonably be construed as unconstitutional. So I understand where you're coming from, but again, I wanna go back to the fact, you know, we don't want tourists now. We have measures that we can take that involve having a few vertebrae, maybe not an entire spine, to keep people safe. This is the time to take them. So I'm willing to assume the risk. I don't know who else is. I don't think there's a horribly great risk. I certainly haven't heard one articulated. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, Commissioner Tobias, I do get your hesitation. So can I put you on the spot? Is that all right, sir? May I?
Please, absolutely.
And let me just throw out one thing I thought...
I'll run around in case you had questions.
Okay, we could put on the end of this, on the end of third paragraph, we could also put in there, are those who are working in Brevard County? So that would, because I've already got people working on things, so all those who are working in Brevard County also could stay in a hotel. But, sir, you're probably the one here that's most familiar with things going on in the state. So do you have any data right now, as far as this, how long it's been in effect, if it's effective, if there's been any problems?
Sure. Monroe County lockdown, it'll be two weeks ago on Sunday. So they have two weeks of experience doing this, and I have not heard the sort of, some of the hypotheticals that are at stake here. I mean, look, the governor's uses executive authority to say what essential services are. You could use that same argument for any of it. I think limiting hotel stays, and by the way, I wanna be clear, when I was talking about Brevard stay-at-home, visitors see you real soon, I don't think anybody was hoping that the sheriff would like pull people over and ask to see ID. I wouldn't support that. I think there's sort of three discreet, simple things that you can do. One, close the hotels to leisure visitors. By the way, I believe the hotels will do that, if you ask them to. The governor ordered restaurants to shut down. You could ask the sheriff, how many restaurants did he have to go enforceably shut down? I don't believe any. I mean, and they had to close altogether. So people generally are doing the right thing. I suspect if you tell the hotels, you cannot take leisure visitors, hear the definitions, use what they're using in Monroe County, and say, anyone who's here on leisure has to go home, I would assume they'll comply. I don't think you're gonna have to send sheriff's deputies in. And again, the other thing I think is the beaches and the boat ramps, those are discreet things, but we should not like, but to be clear, Monroe County, they set up checkpoint. They had, it was easy, there's one way in and there's one way out. And we don't have that. I guess the equivalent to us to do would be on the five or six causeways, but I'm not, excuse me, I'm not suggesting that. But I think if you limited it to the areas where people have concerns, the beaches, the boat ramps, and the hotels, and the campgrounds, I mean, I don't know about you, I got all these calls from constituents about people, the Long Point campground is in my district, south Brevard, and people were all concerned, people are showing up and they're going in the stores and they don't have supplies. I think showing that you all are taking action will be reassuring to your constituents, and it will reduce spread. If people, whether it's you stay at home, or everyone in Brevard County stays in Brevard County, the less people are moving around. Last statistic I'll give you, and I'm happy to answer questions if anybody had them, a study just came out today, and I put it on my Facebook post, my Facebook this morning, people can go and look at it if they want. Last week, Brevard County was the ninth most mobile county in the country. There are 3,007 counties in the United States. So last week, in Seattle, the average person moved 81 feet from their home. People stayed home. 81 feet, and you can go see this if you look it up. And because, by the way, they were the first hotspot, and if you listen to the president, they took it seriously, they shut it down, and they have not become New York. But 81 feet in Seattle. Brevard County was 2.4 miles, the average person was moving around. It made us number nine in the country. And again, we don't wanna tell, we don't wanna have a police state, but the more people stay home, and the less people who are coming here from outside, the closer we will be to 200, which is still an incomprehensible number, and we'd rather be closer to 200 than 4,000. And I think all of those things, all of those things will make a difference. But I mean, if you all had any questions on that or anything else that I'm working on at the state level, I'm happy to answer those questions. Otherwise, I'll go sit in the back.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Loeb, I think I still like my motion, but I wanna add to that, for those who are working in Brevard County.
Can I have a squirt? Can I have a squirt real quick?
Yeah, here, you certainly... Oh. Yeah, I'll work on the specific verbiage, if that's okay, if you can trust me to work with you on that.
Yes, sir. Can I throw that part in, too, though? Okay.
But I'm thinking, the better way to phrase it, just off the top of my head, under ordered that, the first portion where it says the Florida Keys, obviously, that's gonna be changed, or closing all tourists and leisure visitors, we may wanna say excluding those who are working in Brevard County. I just need to see where specifically it fits, but I'll have language addressing folks here for employment purposes. So with respect to that, the second stands. I'm happy to have any further discussion the board would like to have on this item, or if you all wanna hear from public comment first. Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Znardi?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would like to chime in. Someone said something to me this morning that made an awful lot of sense.
Yes, sir.
They said, as a citizen of the United States and a resident of Brevard County, I can get in my car, and it's legal for me to drive for as long as I have a license and as long as I have insurance. It's legal for me to go wherever I want. But it's not legal if I'm drunk and impaired and I could injure someone else. And that's what we're talking about here. We don't know who the drivers out there, meaning the people that are walking and strolling and moving about, we don't know which one of them are, in this case, not drunk, but infected. We can't see it. And they pose a severe danger to everyone in this county. So whatever we can do to flatten out this curve of the virus itself, so that we can get past this, will benefit everyone. And I'm with Representative Fine. I don't wanna see 200 people die in this county. I don't wanna see any more people die in this county for, and thankfully, we haven't had any yet, but I was vehemently opposed to closing the beaches before. And for a period of time, I think it's in the best interest of everyone if we do it. So I'm very much in favor of this motion.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Znardi, anything to add?
I would just say, and I know I sound repetitive, but I wanna be as consistent as possible with the governor's order and his intent. I mean, I may not necessarily agree with some of it, and I think, you know, when you really start to digest and really get into that order and look at what you consider is essential, it may not be in line with what others consider essential. But I think the premise of it is a message to residents that they need to stay home. So, I mean, I would like, like Commissioner Tobias said, I'd like to look at each item. And I think we have to look at the legality of it either, because reading through the case law on that, a little scary as far as restricting commerce and restricting movement and public versus residential access and that sort of thing.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'd like to hear a little bit more from our attorney.
Ms. Bentley?
So what you have under emergency situations is you have authority to regulate property, you have authority even to take property in certain situations. You do need to have a rational nexus between the danger that you're trying to mitigate and the regulation that you impose.
Can I interject for just a moment? Could you, when you're addressing what we have the authority to do, can you be clear to differentiate when there is a difference between the commission's authority and the policy group's authority?
Well, there's 252, that's chapter 252, that's the emergency powers, that's where you have the specific authorization for limited types of temporary takings, that sort of thing, without compensation. And it is limited, and you do need to have reasons for the taking, or you will be questioned later. Under 125, you have the authority to regulate, you do not have the power to take or regulate to the point of taking. You would have to compensate in that situation. Here, you're hearing additional information today that you have not heard previously. I think you are looking to try to, at least so far, what you have been saying is that you're trying to link, that you're discouraging all tourism activities as nonessential under the executive order, and that the exposure to additional people in the community is causing additional, or could cause additional transmission. I think that's what you're trying to get to.
Affirmative.
But, you know, that is the kind of information that will need to be decided by the board, whether or not that is sufficient to address the problems that you're trying to cure here.
Has the board taken other actions in the past that have made you more uncomfortable than were we to take this action? I'm just wondering, would this keep you up at night any more than something we ordinarily might do?
I think I should just decline to answer that one.
That's fair, all right. Okay, so unless there's further comment, I'm gonna go ahead and call the question. Oh, the sheriff, please. Yes, let's have the sheriff come up first, and then we'll go for it. Welcome back, sir.
Thanks, sir.
I like the shirt, sir.
Oh, your shirt was nice, yes.
Thank you.
There is no question of anybody that's watching this, anybody sitting up on the diocese, that every one of us is struggling with what's the right thing to do here. We have gone back and forth in a lot of different categories, and certainly, it is ultimately up to this commission to make that decision. I would like to offer something, and I'm a big believer that citizens will do what you ask them to do. They will work with you if you tell them what you're trying to accomplish. And as a result, I think maybe one of the things we should do, we don't have, and correct me if I'm wrong, we don't have a clear-cut picture of what legalities we have. The governor has issued an executive order that hopefully everyone in the state of Florida is taking note of. The governor put some things in there that, obviously, he and his team of medical specialists and everyone else felt were important to the citizens in recreational activities and everything else. So what I would offer to this commission, and if you don't wanna go with it, I certainly will not be offended, but what I would offer this commission is let us craft a message. I will be the deliverer of that message, telling people to stay out of Brevard County. We love tourism, but at this time, it is not what we want. Let me put that message out through our mediums, work with the county team, and I know our media partners will help us get that out, and let's see if we can convince people not to come here, rather than try and order them not to come here.
Commissioner Pritchett?
However we get to that goal, I'm good. My goal is that we don't close beaches for our residents, so they can, our residents are awesome. They're doing social distancing, they're staying at home. Matter of fact, most of them had already did this before the governor gave extra requests. So our residents are awesome.
And not to interrupt you, ma'am, but we can use this weekend as an evaluation model.
Okay.
And if I tell you that we're flooded, or our city partners tell us they're flooded, and this did not work, then we come back to the drawing board, because I think we all can agree, this is not gonna be over this weekend. This is a marathon for our country. And so I would offer that as an opportunity to maybe resolve some of this.
I'm willing, then, to wait and see what you do with that. Again, if we get to the end goal, I'm very comfortable. If we can get other people from not coming over, which is the biggest thing I'm hearing from the community, they're terrified of Miami coming over, or people infect it, and, you know, most people that come here, I don't know, but I think cutting down on that traffic for the overall well-being of our citizens is important, and cutting down and maybe slowing that infection rate, as Mr. Fine said, that we don't have more people dying, that would just break my heart. So Sheriff, I'm willing, if you think you can do that and get to that goal that way, to wait a few days and see what you have come back on the weekend, and maybe we can have this discussion next week to see if we need the policy board to make a different decision.
I'm gonna beg to differ on that, and let me tell you why. I had a buddy, still actually have a buddy, that I had known for a number of years, some years back, went to graduate school with him. He used to be stationed at Patrick Air Force Base, was a senior master sergeant here, ended up getting his dive instructor, PADI master instructor license, and trained people to dive here. Been diving with people that he trained to dive, I think even in the late 80s, maybe early 90s. I was out on a boat with him, I think it was out of Pompano, or maybe it was out of Jupiter, but in any event, was out on a boat with him a few miles offshore, and we were diving, and he starts flipping out in the water. Educated guy, military guy, bright guy, never had an issue. I've been in caves and caverns with him underwater and never had any concerns with him. He had a medical issue in the water and freaked out as a result of it. Great guy, smart guy, again, wouldn't wanna hurt anyone else. In me trying to get him to inflate his buoyancy compensator so that he wouldn't drown, it was pretty clear to me, if I got in front of him, or I yelled at him, and I actually used some words I'm not gonna use on TV or on recording, instructing him what he needed to do. And this guy was a buddy of mine, he was my best man at my wedding. He didn't listen, because he was panicking. I ended up swimming behind him, under him and behind him, grabbed with my left hand that controls for his BC and inflated it for him. Why? Because even though he may have the best intentions, and even though he's a smart guy, and even though he means well, he probably would've killed me if I swam in front of him. He would've climbed over me and pushed me under, causing me to drown so that he could get some air at the top. This is a situation that's like that. I appreciate that the folks that are maybe in rural Montana or Arkansas, or even West Virginia, that don't have a whole lot of folks coming around, may delay their travel plans because we ask, but they probably weren't gonna come anyway. The folks that I'm worried about coming here are the ones from the high-population areas that are scared to the point that they will do anything to avoid being where they are. They will come here, they'll travel here to enjoy our freedoms, and more importantly, to avoid the high level of infection that they have. So I've gotta tell you, I do have the concern. If we have, if you look at the frequency with which these cases are doubling in a matter of days, I mean, we had twice as many people on a ventilator in just six or eight hours yesterday or the day prior. I mean, it is amazingly quick how this thing multiplies and spreads. I think if we wait, we may end up having, I'm not saying 4,000, but we may have closer in that direction than in the other direction, and frankly, I don't wanna take the chance. And it's not that I don't have faith in you and your ability to message, I do. I absolutely think you will do everything in your power if we give you that opportunity. And I don't mind you doing that in addition to what we're talking about, but when it comes to putting restrictions on folks, I have tremendous hesitation putting restrictions on our own citizens. But when it comes to folks that aren't our residents, that aren't our constituents, sorry, our people come first, and we've gotta continue it that way.
Yes, sir. With all due respect...
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I understand 1,000% your analogy and the direction you're heading in that. I think we have to look at this, I've often kinda used the analogy of a bulletproof vest. If you know anything about a bulletproof vest, it's layer after layer that, when woven together, stops, or, you know, an edged weapon or a bullet, one layer by itself won't do it. We've put in some already existing layers, and I think asking our hoteliers to be our partners in restricting who they're allowing to come in, I think the public beaches, or the public parking being closed, the parks that we've shut down, the directive of, or the ask of, don't come here, I think all of those are layers that are adding up to make up our bulletproof vest. And the only other thing I would say to that is, we might be able to put a directive out that stops people from coming to hotels, but we're not gonna be able to stop those same people that are trying to flee those other areas from coming here and staying with a relative, from coming here and, you know, being able to come through or find whatever lodging it is that they're capable of finding. So we're, I understand the ultimate goal, and as I told you guys before, I'm your partner. I will do whatever you ask me to do in this regard, but I just...
Thank you, sir.
I'm not sure how we exactly get there, and I see everybody struggling with that.
I mean, you have valid points. Obviously, there are going to be some people that slip through the cracks one way or the other. You know, if it's someone's brother, or their mother, or their kid that wants to come here, they're gonna let them stay. I don't see any way around that. But if we can keep the numbers down as much as possible, I think that's the goal. But if we can keep the numbers down as much as possible, I think that's the goal. You know, shy of building a wall and sticking a bubble over it, you know, there's no way to have perfection, but I think, as we've all heard, flattening the curve and that being the goal, we can keep from having our healthcare system overwhelmed if we do everything we reasonably can, within limits, of course, to keep people that don't need to be here away. Commissioner Pritchett?
Sheriff, I always trust things when you bring them up. I just have so much faith in you, always do.
Thank you, ma'am.
I think I'm probably gonna go with both these right now, because I love this when I brought it up, and you just said everything that's in it, and so I think that might help you a little bit as you do this. And I agree, I don't think the hotelers are gonna have any problem at all complying with that.
They're a partner, they will help us.
And you're on the policy board, too, so you guys can talk about this. I think I am gonna go ahead, Commissioner Loeb, and support my first motion with going back to you guys at the policy board, you guys discussing this, because I would love to be able to have our residents have the most amount of freedom. And I think with these things in place, we're not doing all those things. You actually enlightened me through the weeks about the pain we're causing to our residents by not letting them to go out and enjoy being with their family on the beach. And that greatly got my attention, as far as the boats and the lagoons. So I think...
Well, I think the other part of this, too, is...
I think you're really smart.
I see, I should clean that up from the last time, so.
Really, I respect that.
I think the other thing, too, is if we take these measures that have been discussed today, do we close the river? Do we completely stop people from being able to go out on the river? Where does that stop, and how does it stop?
No, this is just gonna relate to tourism now, and then you're doing...
Right, but I'm saying if we went to those other measures, you know, is next the river closing, and, you know, parks and everything else.
Everybody's getting crunched up in their homes now, and they are cranky.
Commissioner Smith, sir?
Yes, I would just like to weigh in briefly that...
Please, sir.
I like the sheriff's analogy with the layers, and I think the beach is one more layer that we could add, because the beach is much more of a magnet from the standpoint that people everywhere can relate to a beach. And if you're only one of two counties in the entire state that has an open beach, that's a huge magnet for people, and it's very easy to get here via 95, or 528, or 520, for people to go to the beaches. And we're not talking about shutting them down, we're just talking about five hours a day on weekends to discourage, we're not keeping people off the beach, not telling, we're not setting up martial law, we're just trying to make it less attractive for people to bring potentially deadly viruses into our county. And I don't think the river is a good analogy, because you don't have, the river isn't the same magnet. You have streams and rivers everywhere in this, and lakes everywhere in this state. So the river isn't the magnet that that beach is. That's what I have to say, and I'm gonna support closing the beaches.
One sec, Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Pritchett, and then we'll hear from the sheriff again.
Yeah, just on that note, they closed our North Brevard Beach, so now I have everybody on the river. It's the residents, because they're trying to get outside and do that. So I think when we start closing the beaches to the residents, because my daughter said today she wanted to take my granddaughter down to Cocoa Beach and get outside for a while, because they've been out of school, they're healthy, and I told her to wait right now, because we're getting fried right now with all the things going on, and I don't want them seeing my daughter was out there with my granddaughter. So I have no intention of wanting to stop from our residents from going out and enjoying their property. And, I'm sorry, sir, but you have that under control, so I'm not gonna vote to do that today, it's not my intent, because you have that under control, and if we stop the tourism aspect, which I'm hearing from everybody, then I think, if this is genuinely what everybody's saying, I think we have just solved that issue and not hurt our residents. So, sir, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. I'll respond to both you and Commissioner Smith. You're right, you know, in the north end, we're getting complaints on a regular basis at Parish Park and other places, they're just being overrun, you know, with people not being able to gain access to the beach. And we're dealing with that, our team's going out and working, you know, with Tiesfield PD and others in that regard. Commissioner Smith, to your point about the five-hour window of time on the beaches, I'm not certain, I had a conversation this morning with one of the beach community city managers, I'm not sure that's even the model they are looking at going with anymore. I think the model they're looking at going with is what Chairman Loeb brought up about you can walk on the beach, you can do this and that. I don't think they're looking at now putting a window of time on it, and I don't want to speak for them, but I believe that's what I understood this morning.
Sheriff, I'll just tell you, just to kinda cut to it, I don't know that it matters at this point, in the sense that, having listened to where the other commissioners are, regardless of which side I go, it doesn't sound like he's gonna have 3-2 at least on that, so it may not matter.
I just, I didn't want Commissioner Smith to think some of the beaches, we're still looking at that, and some of them may be, just the one I talked to today, I got the impression it was a collective position they had taken.
And I don't know if that was intended as well, to be over and above the 11 to 4 weekend restrictions, or in lieu of them, I really don't know.
Yeah, I'm sure, sir.
But that said, I think we've hashed this out, so for purposes of clarity, and Commissioner Pritchett helped me out if any of this is incorrect, but what we're gonna be voting on in a moment here is a motion to...
Mr. Loeb, it's good for me, sir.
You're good, Sheriff.
Thank you, sir.
To recommend to the policy group that they put in place a measure that closes Brevard County to all tourists and leisure visitors, excluding those folks who are working within Brevard County, and effective immediately, no lodging establishment, which we're gonna define to include hotels, motels, campgrounds, vacation rentals, and we'll work on the exact language to see how we can broaden that, to make sure that we don't miss something and create a roadblock. We'll prohibit them from accepting reservations for any tourist or leisure purpose, is that okay, if we put that in there? Including extensions to current reservations. What do you want to do, if anything, though, with respect to folks who've made reservations but haven't even checked in? I don't think we need them either. So, okay, so we'll also exclude those folks who have already made reservations but have not yet checked in. Again, if they're here for tourism, or intend to be here for tourism or leisure purposes, they'll be excluded, with the caveat being, we're not excluding anyone who's here for work purposes. We're gonna, just as a heads up, in terms of what I contemplate within the policy group, we'll probably put in place a requirement, they have a note from their employer indicating that they're traveling for work purposes, that the hotels will obviously have to make use of and determine if it's sufficient or not. We'll change the effective dates and wordsmith this a little bit, but that's essential to the motion, is it not? All right, that's been seconded by me, so we've had plenty of discussion on it, we'll do a roll call vote, just because we have two folks on the line. Commissioner Smith?
I would just like to say, I'm serious with that, how many people are in the audience that would like to comment on this?
We've got, to my understanding, four individuals who are here for public comment, five individuals, three of them have questions about golf courses and whether golf courses are essential, and the fourth, I think, wants to offer a prayer, so we may have one or none.
Okay.
Ms. Mently?
I know, sorry.
Hang on one sec, Commissioner Smith.
Mr. Leisenfeld has a question about campgrounds, because we have some locals who actually have some long-term residencies in these campgrounds.
Especially at Long Point Campground, you have a lot of local residents that go camping. Overall, about a third of the reservations for the next three months are from in-county residents.
Are they there for leisure purposes, or what are they there for?
Yes, especially at Long Point, a lot go out to enjoy the river for a few days.
I don't know that we can exclude them, that's my concern legally. I mean, unfortunately, I'd love to exclude them, I just don't think we have the legal authority to do that. So unfortunately, this is one of those things where it's gonna have to be an inconvenience to whatever degree it is for them. So, and again, this we're looking at implementing, I would presume, for as long as the local state of emergency lasts. So I'll presume, Commissioner Pritchett, if that's all right, that that's contemplated by the motion. Okay. So, all right, Commissioner Smith, affirmative or against? Yea or nay?
Affirmative.
All right, you're with it. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yes.
I'm yes. Commissioner Znardi?
Yes.
And Commissioner Tabia?
No.
All right, passes 4-1 with Commissioner Tabia and the negative. All right, so I'm just gonna go through briefly, I think some of these may have been rendered moot, but so I don't miss something, I'm gonna go through briefly some of the other items that we discussed. Do we, if, do we want to do anything with respect to the Spoil Islands to avoid congregating? Because I know that Commissioner Smith originally mentioned Fish and Wildlife was enforcing, the sheriff had mentioned that they're enforcing as well, but there have been problems that have resulted in BCSO being called out. It would be nice to give him the ability to say there's also a local order prohibiting folks going to the Spoil Islands. And again, this would be a recommendation to the policy group, that to the greatest extent lawful, no one is permitted access to Spoil Islands until the cessation of the local state of emergency. Anyone have any thoughts, or want to make a motion to that end? Yours didn't come on, but I see you reaching there. Commissioner Tabia?
Sorry, Mr. Sheriff.
Please.
So we'd be doing this for the sheriff?
Well, we'd be doing this to preclude people from getting onto the Spoil Islands.
You just, maybe, this would be an additional tool for the sheriff.
Yeah.
The sheriffs, from what I was listening to, wanted to make a public relations type of play, and was asking us not to take these steps. So I just want to make sure we're not doing something for someone that doesn't want it done for them, because it sounds like we just did that, so it sounds like...
He did say something substantially similar to that, but he also said that he would follow the directives of the board and enforce what we put in place.
Yeah, those are two different things.
Could you come on down, just so we have it for the record, sir? I apologize for making you run. You'll get your steps in today.
Yeah, I'll get my steps in. We need to wake Junie up, so he can get his steps in, he needs it.
The question is, do you need an additional tool to stop congregation of more than 10 people on Spoil Islands?
I can tell you, FWC's been working with us on that a little bit. We're doing our education and awareness component. I think the governor's order, executive order, covers some of that as well, correct? So I think we're in a good place.
Okay, if you're happy, I won't ask for a motion in that case.
I mean, we will address it, and we will deal with it, but I'm not sure what teeth you would give me in regards to that, anyway.
Second-degree misdemeanor penalties?
I mean, if that's included in the motion, then...
Would you, I mean, would you like that? Because my thought is, if you just ask them nicely to leave, that's great, 99% of them will do that, but for the 1% that cause you problems, I'd like you to be able to have something to back it up.
I'd always like to have teeth in something, so...
I just want to know, you didn't tell us necessarily, "Don't do that, don't do that." You heard us bouncing all over the place, and you came up with another recommendation.
Absolutely, yeah, whatever decisions you guys make, as I said, I'm gonna be your partner, and I'm gonna work with. I was offering you an alternative, and something that I think could work, so...
Yeah, you're great.
I mean, if this is something we can do to give you a little bit more of a basis to enforce that, is that good, bad, or are you neutral?
Anytime you can give me teeth in an ordinance, it works for us.
Okay, all right, we'll go ahead, I'll ask for a motion on that. All right, we got a motion from Commissioner Pritchett, I'll go ahead and second it. Any further discussion on it? All in favor of... Yeah, we'll do a roll call on all the votes, since we have folks on the line today. This is on the motion to preclude access to the Spoil Islands for so long as the local state of emergency exists. This will be a recommendation to the policy group to enact, to the greatest extent lawful. All right, Commissioner Smith?
Yes, and this pains me, but I agree.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yes.
I'll vote yes as well. Commissioner Znardi?
Yes.
And Commissioner Tabia?
No.
All right, this one passes 4-1 as well. So another one, the hair salons, nail salons, massage parlors, spas that cannot provide services which don't meet the CDC or FTOH guidelines, including the six-foot social distancing, shall be prohibited from performing those services which cannot meet those distancing guidelines. This is not to shut down the hair salons, nail salons, massage parlors, or spas. It may have the effect of doing that, but we will allow them to operate, assuming this passes, to perform any other services or sell whatever other goods they might want to that aren't already prohibited by the executive order that came out yesterday and was amended earlier today. This would simply preclude them from doing anything that doesn't meet the CDC and/or the Florida Department of Health guidelines, and again, this would be a recommendation to the policy group to enact. Any thoughts? Commissioner Pritchett?
Yes, sir. I think I agree with the intent in that, I think people should quit going, I think I agree with Commissioner Znardi, Commissioner Tabia's thought on this. I think it is already under that directive from the governor. He told people, "Don't go to them if they can't comply with the regulations," so I don't feel like we need to necessarily do that one at this point, although, two days ago, I thought we did, but since he came out with this directive, I got very comfortable.
All right, I'll leave that be. All right, next item up, libraries. I was proposing using libraries to offer childcare within CDC and Florida Department of Health guidelines with respect to the max number of children per room or per location for first responders, emergency room staff, and urgent care staff. And the idea being, and I've spoken with BPS, Brevard Public Schools, and I would have to confirm with them that they're okay with this, but this would be a recommendation to use our facility and have BPS personnel that are either trained and/or licensed to provide childcare, do the supervision for as long as need be, within the duration of the state of, local state of emergency. Any thoughts?
Yes, sir. I think I would like the school board to come back if they think that's a thing. I have, we've had daycare at our church for a long time, there's a lot of responsibility, there's a lot of liability, and not that the school board couldn't do it, but I do know from what we're dealing with now, we've had a few of these preschools closed down because parents are no longer bringing children, so we've kind of knocked out the public sector's ability to run a business that's allowed even by the governor right now. And also, these children have a higher risk of carrying the virus, so there is a lot of work going into the disinfecting, the gloves and everything, so I think that should be something we should very slowly try to do something with, without it coming from a strong need from the healthcare provider saying they need something.
Okay, Commissioner Tabia, I apologize, I may have flipped the order there.
No, you've done a very good job. Mine would be along those, my concerns would be on the same side as Commissioner Pritchett. Before we made this decision, I'd like to know cost, I'd like to know liability, I'd like to know whether or not we had the manpower, and then you brought up something else that was pretty concerning there.
Yes, sir.
You said first responders, and then we went into emergency room physician, so we, or professional staff. So we've gone from the public sector to now the public sector taking care of the private sector. So I'm always cognizant when we, you know, put that stuff together. Now, you know, you've got public taxpayers, right, paying for a service for a private entity. You know, that certainly draws my attention there.
I think the employees that BPS would be using are being paid anyway. I may be wrong about that, I can check, but the fact is, with respect to our response, my understanding right now is we're giving personal protective equipment to non-governmental entities because there's a need. The reason being, they're on the front lines treating, diagnosing, testing for coronavirus, so to arbitrarily say, "Well, we can give them gloves, face masks, and spend taxpayer dollars on that," but we're not gonna spend it for something else to enable them to do the testing that we're giving them the gloves and the face masks for, I just, I have a hard time differentiating.
Between a county employee and a non-county employee, you have trouble dis... You have a trouble separating those two?
I have trouble separating that it's okay...
I mean, because I'm sure, I'm sure our insurance company doesn't.
No, that's not what I'm saying at all. What I'm saying is I have trouble differentiating...
I'm sure taxpayers do.
If you'd bear with me, let me explain what I'm saying here, I'd be much appreciative. The point is, if it's okay for us to spend taxpayer dollars on personal protective equipment for non-governmental employees, hospital workers that don't work for the government, why then is it now problematic to do other things using taxpayer funds, whether it's BPS or otherwise, to enable them to do what we're already giving them taxpayer funds to accomplish?
Because they're employed by a private entity, and it should be the responsibility of that private entity to take care of those responsibilities. It's only at such time that the government needs to step in. The goal is not for government to step in, and this is what's happened at this commission meeting, it's government first, and I have a real concern with that. It's time for these businesses to step forward and say, "We need..." Disney stepped forward and said, "We're gonna take care of our employees during these times." I don't know that Health First, or Omni, or these other organizations aren't willing to do that. If we were to focus in on the public employees, that would be one thing. And quite frankly, I don't think I would be for that until I got those, that cost, the liability, there's many factors that go into daycare.
Sure.
And I don't know what they are, and that may be a wise decision to move forward, help these individuals. I can't imagine a cost-benefit analysis that we'd have to look at potentially, the overtime we'd have to pay to some of these first responders because others could not work because they were taking care of their kids. So there's many issues involved in that. However, I'm certainly absolutely, utterly, totally not comfortable with, without coming with a public solution to what I see as a private problem.
How do you really feel?
I appreciate the idea. Listen, it's very nice, and it's very tough to say, "Hey, listen."
Yes, sir.
It sounds terrible, but yeah, I'm just not there. I appreciate it.
You're just so adamant about it. All right, I'll leave that one be for the moment then. Let me just make sure I'm not forgetting anything. I believe there was one more with respect to the beaches. So what, if anything, do we want to do on the beaches with the Friday, Saturday, Sunday, 11 to 12? Do we want to leave that be for the time being? Yeah, we may have avoided the problem that was designed to help us avoid. Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Zardini, any thoughts? I don't want to exclude you all since you're on the phone.
No, I've already said pretty much what I was thinking.
All right, Commissioner Zardini?
Yeah, I would just say, obviously, the beach is an ongoing thing that we're looking at every day. We're out there, you know, the minute it becomes a problem, obviously, we'll address it. I mean, I'm fully willing to close them down tomorrow if I believe there was a threat. But right now, there's, we just aren't seeing the population on the beach that people expect. Hopefully, by limiting tourism, then we'll be able to not have that problem in the future, but...
Yeah, I think we've taken a huge step.
You know, I think it's, but I think it's sort of wild that people are so concerned about the 29 people we counted on a mile and a half stretch of beach, and they are concerned about the mass crowds and hoarding going on in the grocery stores. That's just mind-blowing to me, because that exposure is so much greater, you know?
Yeah.
And I think that needs to be addressed, obviously, not by government, because we can't, you know, force businesses to behave how they should be behaving, but that, to me, your biggest risk is those large crowds of people at grocery stores and gas stations and that sort of thing.
Perfect. I appreciate it, Commissioner. All right, so that's what I've got for now. I would ask, Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm sorry, this has been so rapid fire.
Yes, sir.
Couple points of clarification, you know, for me. All the votes that we took were merely, will be really, BOCC recommendations to the policy group, is that correct?
Yes, which is convening at 4:30 today.
Thank you. And second of all, the beaches, right now, the recommendation from the BOCC is going to be to leave it the way they currently are.
I don't think there's any recommendation from the BOCC with respect to the beaches specifically. Yeah, I just, there's not been a specific motion that was made. That's the feeling I'm getting, but since there's no motion, I'm just not going to address that as far as saying the board wants X, Y, or Z.
Okay, well, we're dealing with all the other ones. Does the board want to take a, does the board want to take a position on that? Because what I'm hearing is we're making recommendations on everything except the one thing that we're probably getting the most information, most contact on.
Let me just make this simple. I don't think it's necessary. I'm not going to move that they take action with respect to the beaches, because it's pretty clear where the commission is with that.
Okay.
So if someone asks me, I'll give them my opinion as to where the commission is, but it's not something that I intend to bring up unless it's brought up to me.
Thank you very much.
All right, Ms. Bentley, there were, as I mentioned, a couple concerns that either were shared by several folks that are out waiting for public comment or were expressed with respect to golf courses. Do you care to opine as to whether golf courses are essential businesses?
We got an email from someone associated with the governor's office who indicates that golf courses are open.
All right, golf courses, I guess it's essential to get that tee time. And childcare, I think we've already heard, is open?
Yes.
All right, with that, there was a constituent, and I've been trying to be as liberal as I can with respect to sharing comments that folks are sending electronically with the commission so that we don't do something to encourage people to pile on top of one another, pile in a certain area. So we did get an email that came through that I was asked to share with the commission. I'm hoping we can have Logan pull it up on the screen at this point, big enough for my nearsightedness. So it basically says, "Hello, Brian, I live in Brevard County on Merritt Island and have been isolating in my home for two weeks. Due to my age and medical conditions, I will stay in as long as it takes." Gosh, that's tough to read. Can you zoom in at all, Logan? I'm sorry. There we go. Okay, so it says, "When I see people on the news at Brevard Beaches from Orlando-area counties with stay-at-home orders, it scares me to think that this will keep me stuck inside even longer than necessary, possibly longer than my groceries will last. If we're too slow or stop the spread, people need to understand that stay at home doesn't mean go to the beach. Going to the beach is not essential travel. It's crazy to hear someone say they're from Kissimmee and wanted to get away from the virus. How can we keep our case numbers down with all of this travel? May as well tell all the people from New York to come to our beaches, too." Sarcasm. "I'm hopeful the Brevard County officials will smarten up and close all the beaches before we become a hotspot. Until then, please try to educate and keep people home. Crossing county lines for pleasure is just selfish and inconsiderate. Locals can live without the beach for a month. We have to think about the greater good," or pardon me, "we have to think of the greater good and focus on the big picture. I think closing the beaches and boat ramps would be much easier than checking each vehicle entering the county with roadblocks. In my mind, these are the only two options. Orlando threatened to complete shutdown yesterday, which would include grocery stores. We don't want that here, and we don't want them coming here. Thank you." Michelle Dunage, and I apologize for mispronouncing that, but I, as I said, I would share the emails that I received where there's a request to share it with the commission. So there we have it. All right, let's go forward if staff's ready with public comment. I believe there's five folks now.
Yeah, now there we go. They're already ready for you, Commissioner.
Perfect. All right, welcome. If everyone can just start with their name and their city of residence, that would be wonderful.
Hi, I'm Carol Wheatley, and I'm from Melbourne, and I am here to just thank you very much for, excuse me, for allowing the public to come before you and give comments. And the comment that I wanted to make today was the fact that government is here to protect the citizens and serve the citizens of Brevard County. And I want to let you know that there are a lot of people in Brevard County that really, truly appreciate what you're doing for us. The Bible mandates us to pray for those in authority over us, and I want you to know that I personally know hundreds of people. I don't meet with them, but I know hundreds of people who are praying for you, because right now, more than ever, Brevard County needs wisdom in making the right policy decisions. We need guidance from above. And so to that end, I would just like to remind you that God is the one who brings the crisis to an end. God is the one who brings the peace in the midst of the crisis, and it's God himself who is going to give you wisdom to do what Sheriff Ivey just said, and that is to do what's right. So far, what I'm hearing, you all are doing what's right. You're opening to discussion, and that's always a good thing. But when we add discussion, prayer, then we know God's will is going to be done in Brevard County. And to that end, I just want to bless you. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to come in here with my opinion and share it with you. And I just thank God for a country that gives me freedom of speech to do this in Jesus' name. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming out. It's nice to have someone come with compliments as opposed to some of the other stuff we get. I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioners, hi. My name's Wayne McDowell. I live in Viera, and I golf, and I'm here today to encourage you, because I understand that you're holding up on making a decision if golf courses should remain open effective tomorrow morning. So I'm also a member at Duran of the golf course and on the committee as far as men's associations. I've talked to dozens and dozens, dozens of golfers, and number one concern for us on the course, obviously, is safe. Now, I can't speak for all courses in Brevard County, but I can speak for the one that I play at Duran, and I think their management's done an outstanding job to socially distance all of us. The procedures they have as far as no more than three people in the clubhouse, rakes aren't inside, the traps, you don't touch the pins. I can leave my house, go to a tee box, play golf, and return home and never touch people on that court. And so we talk a lot when we're walking or around the shops, the players, and everybody's so concerned about their health, they're concerned about their family, and I know that no one that I golf with that I know would do anything at all that would harm themselves or family or their country. And like Lita said, you're waiting to decide if you should continue to have the courses open. I would strongly encourage you to have them open, just for the sake of having people to be able to get out, spend a couple hours, just do something in the fresh air. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I don't think, just my personal opinion, I don't think you have a high risk of having them closed in the next little while. I mean, obviously, the situation's fluid, but I doubt the proposal's going to come up this evening with the policy group, and at this point, even if it does, that's not something I would support. So I think you're probably pretty safe. Thank you.
Hey, Commissioners, my name is Craig Henninger, local VR resident, and also a member at the Duran Golf Course. Just first want to say thank you for all your hard work and keeping us safe in the county and everything you've done. I'm sure some of your negative comments are a little tiring, and I just really want to stay out positive in how thankful I am that you guys are doing such a good job. As Wayne said, Duran is just doing a phenomenal job of keeping everybody safe and golfers as well. You know, obviously, we, you know, it's a sport where it demands social distancing. You don't want somebody standing close to you when you're swinging your golf club. And like you said, you know, I leave my house, I live in Areva Village, and I can leave my house and be back there without touching anybody else, touching, you know, they're leaving the door open, so you don't even have to touch the door handle to get into the clubhouse. So again, thank you for everything you're doing. I don't want to take up any more time. It sounds like for now, it's a safe, but I know the, you know, with that stay-at-home, everybody was a little nervous that you may take away something that's just a really good, not only physical exercise, but kind of keeping mental exercise as well. I'm home from work as an airline pilot right now, just kind of staying away from everything. So this is kind of my outlet to be able to still get outdoors, get physical exercise. So again, thank you, thank you again for your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Wear your sunscreen.
Oh, absolutely.
My name is Garland Erd. I was in golf course management in Baltimore for 11 years before retiring here. I worked part-time at Baytree National and am a member at Duran. I've been at Baytree five years. As someone who was in management, I've never seen a sport other than golf that polices itself the ways that we do. And I think that most people, if they do what they're talking about, going with just cart paths only, weed themselves out, because they're not healthy enough to walk, they don't want to walk, they're lazy. Most of the people that want this exercise, they've got two courses that I know of that are self-cleaning before and after every round. Nobody's touching bags. If someone gets within six feet of me, I've got an 80-inch reach, I'm going to take their head off. It's just a lot of people like that just realize that this sport here is going to police itself. So whatever you get from us will be what you ask for, and that's enough of your time. Thank you very much. Do appreciate you letting me speak.
I appreciate your patience, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. You've got the floor, sir.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, County Commissioners. My name is Pat Ross. I'm a Brevard County resident. I'm a retired charter captain. I'm presently on leave from the Watershead Bait and Tackle Shop to the court. I spoke with the FSB, and they said if they're not closing anything, the governor also exempted fishing and hunting, and the best place to go to be away from crowds is fishing. If you go out in a boat, you're not close to anybody else that knows in the boat. With so few things to do now that we're having to stay at home, I would appreciate if y'all would consider leaving, fishing. Thank you.
Sir, I think you're in good shape. The only restriction that we're recommending that might in any way impact what you're talking about is we're not allowing folks to go to the Spoil Islands, but if you want to get out in your boat and fish, God bless you, go for it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, any further public comment? All right, that's it. We don't have any further public comment? Oh, one more. I apologize. Maybe? Oh, nope. All right, had me confused there. Yeah, pulling my leg, okay. You had me going. All right, so we'll go through board reports at this point. Mr. Batte?
Yeah, we have just one. We do have one additional item that Stephen Darling is going to come up and address relative to personal protective equipment that we will need the board's consideration and approval for.
All right, we've got them up on deck here. You've got the floor?
Thank you. Requesting that the board will authorize an additional purchase of PPE, specifically hospital gowns, in an amount not to exceed $242,500. This is to fulfill the request of 50,000 gowns that we have through Web EOC. The company that we're looking to get them from is based out of South Orange, New Jersey, has been in business for 20-plus years, and they are a reseller and distributor of medical testing kits.
Any questions? May I have a motion? All right, I'll second Commissioner Pritchett's motion. All in favor, we'll go ahead and do a roll call. Actually, no, we don't need a roll call on this one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Batte, was that it, or do you have anything else, sir?
That's it. I did share with the board an email that we're going to be sending out to directors that's addressed to county operations.
Yes, sir.
And we'll get that out this afternoon, right after this meeting. Thank you.
Sounds good. Ms. Bentley?
No report.
All right, let's go down the line. Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you, sir. I just want to throw out a thank you to you guys. I know all the things that we're going through with trying to come to these decisions right now, the comments we're doing, and I don't believe one thing these people are saying to me saying bad about y'all. Just kidding.
Someone saying something bad about me? That's never happened.
Yeah. So anyways, I just want to thank you so much. And on that, I really want to really thank Commissioner Dr. Zardini right now. You're on the front lines, and ma'am, you have my complete admiration right now for what you're doing. I just can't thank you enough for your service and all you're doing for the community. You are, you're just awesome. And I also want to thank the policy board for hanging in here with us, and I love the way this has worked now that we're able to have a open, public discussion where everybody understands why we're coming to these ideas, and I appreciate the patience and how this has worked out, sir. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I'll continue to do what I can. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A question on whether or not you intend to have the meeting at this juncture for tomorrow? I think we have one scheduled, or is that incorrect here?
If nothing changes, my intent's to cancel it, but I don't want to formally cancel it until we get a few hours later in the day. If something comes up that's catastrophic, I would still like us to be able to meet.
Okay.
And I apologize, but the notice requirements are tough.
No, I get it. And how far ahead did you notice? I know you said on a daily basis, did, have you noticed, or do you plan to notice every day of the week, next week?
I talked to Jim, and essentially, what I told him moving forward was that if we had a regularly scheduled meeting on one of the days, that meeting would just suffice
day of the week, next week?
I talked to Jim, and essentially what I told him moving forward was that if we had a regularly scheduled meeting on one of the days, that meeting would just suffice for that day's meeting for coronavirus purposes as well. We'd just address it in board reports or otherwise. If the meeting is an evening meeting and we otherwise don't have something extenuating, I don't think there's a need to notice the following day's meeting either. So if it's a morning meeting, that would suffice for everything for that day. If it's an evening meeting, it would suffice for that day and the following, would otherwise be the noon meeting as well. But otherwise, I know staff was looking to see whether we could notice all of them at the same time or how far out we could do, because if we can do that and pay essentially once to do it, I would say notice as far as we reasonably can, and we'll just not call it, we don't need to call, but if we have to pay individually, I wasn't as fond as I otherwise would be for putting out notices for a month in advance.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.